Thank you all very much, and I'd like to thank all the public for their patience with us as we get started tonight. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes, sir, thank you. 5:43, Mayor Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Christine Lowe, present. Councilmember Edward Garcia.
Present.
Member Jean Goss.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kelly Krebs was previously excused.
Great, thank you so much. All right, tonight for our pledge of allegiance and inspiration, Councilmember Goss, could you take us?
Sure. Please rise if you can and face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. We're trying to figure out what to say for inspiration, sometimes it's a challenge. I thought maybe something lighthearted tonight, but maybe related to city government in a tangential way. So I found an article published today in Europe at the Radio Prague website in the Czech Republic, and it's about how a beaver colony successfully completed a public works project. So, I'm going to read the article verbatim, I can't improve on this. A beaver colony in the Birdie region has gained overnight fame by building several dams in the Birdie Protected Landscape Area, creating a natural wetland exactly where it was needed. It saved the local authorities $1.3 million and has the public cracking jokes about public administration and red tape. They could have not have chosen their location better, erecting the dams on a bypass gully that was built by soldiers in the former military base years ago to drain the area. The revitalization project drafted by environmentalists was supposed to remedy this. Mr. Pfizer, head of the Birdie Protected Landscape Area Administration, says nature took its course and the beavers created the necessary bitoteok conditions practically overnight. Quote, "The military forest management and the Vatova River Basin were negotiating with each other to set up the project and address issues regarding ownership of the land. The beavers beat them to it, saving us $1.3 million. They built the dams without any project documentation and for free." Zoologist Zuri Vilcek said the local administration was no competition for the beaver colony. Quote, "Beavers are able to build a dam in one night, two nights at most, while people have to get building permits, get the building project approved, and find the money for it." Environmentalists who inspected the work said the wetland and pools the beavers created will offer good conditions for the rare stone crayfish, frogs, and other species that thrive on wetlands, said Jaroslav Obergmeyer, head of the Central Bohemian Office of the Czech Nature and Landscape Protection Agency. Quote, "Beavers always know best. The places where they build dams are always chosen right, better than we design it on paper." So I don't know what to take from that, except that as a public entity that sometimes has to contract out, maybe we should increase the scope of our bids and maybe see if some colonies of beavers are available sometime. Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor back to you.
Well put, well put, excellent. All right, so now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the meeting agenda. We have, there's two items we have requests to modify. So I'm going to turn to City Attorney Gargosian for the first item, and then I'll bring up the second.
Mayor, thank you. In light of the rains that are going to begin on Wednesday and continue, I believe, through Friday, the city manager has requested that we place an item for discussion on the agenda on an emergency basis. In order to do so, we'll need a vote of the entire council to approve placing that on the agenda, and I believe staff does have a presentation if the city council chooses to place it on the agenda. That's the first one.
And that would be in the discussion section, is that correct? Or would it be in the?
It would be a discussion item, correct, Mayor?
Great, okay.
And the second one would be rearranging the discussion items. Obviously, this is going to be the council's prerogative, but placing consideration of ordinance 1478 before sign placement would be the request. And then perhaps if you wanted to have the discussion item for this emergency consideration of the rains, you can place that first, have consideration of the ordinance 1478 second, and then sign placement third would be an option.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the agenda to reflect the city attorney's proposal.
I'll second that.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the agenda has been adopted unanimously. Next, we have, we're back to you, City Attorney Gargosian, for a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on January 28th to discuss initiation of litigation. No reportable action was taken. The city council again met today under that same agenda item, initiation of litigation. Again, no reportable action was taken.
Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval for reading resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then we've got the meeting minutes. If I could turn it to the city clerk to walk us through that item. We've got, I think, two items on that.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The agenda currently lists three sets of meeting minutes. However, the January 9th minutes were previously approved as amended, and so those do not require a second approval. The city council has asked to consider the approval of the January 21st special meeting minutes and the approval of the January 28th, 2025 city council regular meeting minutes. The city clerk's office did receive a request from Mayor Parkhurst suggesting non-substantive amendments, specifically to the January 21st meeting minutes. Page three, we were asked to change from Mayor Krebs to Mayor Parkhurst. On page 20, Councilmember Lowe requested an item on motorized bikes and scooters and safety regulations. And then to the January 28th meeting minutes, it was suggested that we make an amendment to the minutes to reflect that Councilmember Krebs, the pronouns be changed on that sentence in the second paragraph.
Madam City Clerk, one more on the January 21st. My apologies, not just the motorized bikes and scooters, but also the community risk reduction officer. Those were both Mayor Pro Tem Lowe. And I believe I'm noted there. Thank you.
Any other edits to the minutes? Then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we need separate, or can we put these together?
It can be done as one whole.
Great, all right. Then we'll move to mayor and city council reports. Councilmember Goss, why don't you go first?
Okay. On February 3rd, I attended the meeting of the Ad Hoc Library Project Committee here at City Hall. The meeting was well-attended. We did miss a meeting in January because of the fires. And we got some good and some bad news. I'll share the bad news first. As you can imagine, the fire has tapped into a significant amount of staff time in January, and that kind of set us back in terms of time. And then an incongruency was found between the architectural survey and the civil survey. So it took several weeks for a redesign to take place, so they became congruent and can be used. And in total, those developments put us back about a month. The good news is that we are in the clear now. We're proceeding with the remaining excavation. Also, the original time estimates were very well padded. So the target date for completion will still be January 31st, 2026. The project manager is very confident that that will take place. And we're particularly happy to hear that they've gotten over all the major hurdles, all the unexpected things that are pretty much taken care of. So they think work is going to proceed much quicker over the next few months in the springtime. I like, I think it was referred to as open field running for the next few months. So that's a good way to encapsulate this. The project manage, project management firm has given us a new project manager. Vertex has a new person in named Sandra Berger. She attended that meeting and is diving right in, and will be working closely with her director of public works and other people associated with the project. Last Friday, the 7th, I attended the Transportation Subcommittee meeting with my Subcommittee meeting colleague, Mayor Parkhurst. Very exciting news, after a long, long, laborious process, the Subcommittee has completed its original charge, and we will be bringing back a proposal for a new shuttle service and a new dial ride service for the city at our next city council meeting on February 25th. So stay tuned, it's going to be very interesting and exciting, I think. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much. Councilmember Garcia, why don't we kick it to you next?
Thank you. There was a meeting of the Senior Community Commission on February 6th, last Thursday. See Chair Kroc is in attendance. It was a typical meeting, except for we had a presentation by City Attorney Gargosian and Senior Planner Wolf regarding the Sierra Vista Apartments. There's been some concern. It is a senior living facility for the most part, low and very low income. I think 45 of the 46 units are designated for that. But Attorney Gargosian gave a very good overview of the history of all of the different agreements and amendments and ownership. And that was really part one. They tried to keep their meetings to one hour, so we will see a part two. I'm assuming on March 6th at the next meeting, which will be talking about the different AMI levels for very low and low income and the rent, the amount of rent that can be charged for each of these units, because that's one of the large concerns, the rent and the maintenance. And that was brought to the commission, and the commission actually got a very quick response from staff, so I was very pleased with that. And that's all I have to report.
Great, Mayor Pro Tem.
On February 5th, I went to different homes with the Sierra Madre Fire Association, the firefighters, and was able to really partake in something kind of nice, to be able to go and see the families and the people whose homes were damaged. And not necessarily lost, because you're not able to walk to a home and help somebody out when they're not there. But they took part in a pretty good program, a neat program that California Fire Foundation put together, and they call them the safe cards. They're supplies aid to victims of emergency cards that they handed out to every person in Sierra Madre who had a damaged or lost home. And then Only Place in Town also covered a dinner card for about $100 each person. So it was really neat to go and see those people. And, you know, we have a really amazing town where a lot of the people are like, well, is there anyone else who could use it more than me? And they, you know, and the people that really need it, they're still willing to give. And we're seeing that all across a lot of our residents who lost are out there actually giving back and not receiving help. And then on February 6th, I went to the special meeting of LA County's Selection Committee, where we select our district library commissioners and also our metro commissioners. And so that was a new experience for me. And we also got to see all the different council members and mayors from all of the cities in Los Angeles County. And then on February 7th, city manager Ronoso and I really got to attend one of the most unique, and I don't know if this has ever been done, special meetings ever, is our brand-new Senator, State Senator Sasha Rene Perez, as well as our Senate Leader Mike McGuire held a roundtable. And we thought we were going just to hear all the needs that all of our cities have experienced during this disaster. And instead, it was almost every single senator from all over the whole state. So I was sitting next to the senator for a more southern region, and we got to speak with the senator for Santa Barbara that dealt with the mudslide in Montecito. So it was a really great experience. One of the things that we really brought up, of course, was our mud flow mitigation. What are we going to do and what can we do? And we got put into contact with the people that worked with the other mud flows in the Santa Barbara County. What are small businesses able to do besides just grants? Army Corps of Engineer removal debris and insurance companies. And all this information will come to you. We'll be able to feed it out to you, particularly at a later time at a town hall meeting. And also with seniors. We're seeing our seniors really have a lot of deficits right now because they've been impacted, they had to evacuate. So their comprehension is lower, they're not good with technology. So how are they able to fill out all of this paperwork and get it in at the dates? So there's funding available, as well as positions available, that go out to the community and help seniors. School funding, what are we going to do with all the students that we've lost, as well as the change in your property assessments? What's going to happen if you have to rebuild? So it was a really exciting time to really collaborate with everybody.
Thank you very much. And thank you for representing the city at the LA County Selection Committee and the special meeting. So my report, January 29th, I attended the opening of the Sierra Madre Middle School and got to see the first day there and what they were doing to help support all of the students that were, you know, the first day back, and all of the wraparound services that they've got for them. On January 31st, I attended an assembly roundtable for our Assembly District with Assembly Member Harabedian, and a number of other cities attended. And we got, you know, it was really a listening session that what all the cities needed and what do they want from the Assembly District. City Manager Ronoso also attended that with me. And it was a good conversation, and we got some good information out of that, which along with the information from the Senate meeting, I think, we'll pull together and get out to the community. On February 6th, the Clean Power Alliance had its board meeting. Two things to come out of that. One of the items is that there was a recent CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission's, ruling that went against the interests of us as members of the Clean Power Alliance from a financial perspective. That was unfortunate. It was even more unfortunate that they put it on consent and didn't even have it as a discussion item. And the report back that we got was the way they treated our representatives, including our, the county representative, county supervisors, was not what you would expect of an organization that buys the most renewable energy in the country. On the more positive side, we approved a geothermal project out of Utah, I believe. It'll give us 24/7 renewable energy, and that'll be coming online, I think, in And that'll be coming online, I think, in 2027. And then, I was also President of the Transportation Committee, and nothing additional to report there. Councilmember Garcia always does such a fabulous job reporting out from that. City announcements. So I have three announcements here. The first one is that the seniors are going to be continuing to host the Senior Lunch and Food Program, Monday through Thursday, at the Hart Park Center, starting at 11:30 a.m. And if, and this is sponsored in cooperation with the YWCA. And if you want more information, you can call 626-355-5278. And then, also with the Senior Committee is they're accepting nominations for their Older American of the Year. The nomination forms are available at the Senior Hart Park House. And we encourage you to pick up one and help us celebrate the incredible contributions of our older adults in the community. And I imagine that there's a public comment coming up that will tell us more about that. Then, on Thursday, February 13th, so two days from now, the Chamber of Commerce is going to have a ribbon cutting for Die Pretty over at the Kensington from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And there's also a mixer associated with that. And that is all we have for City Council Reports and public announcements. So now we'll move on to the participation code. So we're going to open it up for items not on the agenda. And as a part of that, we have the participation code, which is on back of all of the cards that are there. And for the first couple of meetings in the year, we typically read this. So our public participation code of conduct says, "Your participation is welcomed and invited at all City Council meetings. The Council requests that participants refrain from making personal, slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. A person who continues to disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting after being warned by the mayor or designee to cease the disruption may be precluded from further participation in the meeting. No signs, posters, or other large objects shall be brought into council chambers or other meeting place if doing so would disturb or otherwise impede the orderly course of the meeting." If you do want to make a public comment, we do ask you to fill out one of the yellow cards and bring it down to the clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Clerk's Office received three emails that were forwarded to the City Council. And they, well, first was from George Eaton on Highland. The second was from Katrina Hitstopp on Orange Drive. And the third was from Catherine Addy. And those emails were forwarded to the City Council and will be entered into record. We do have four comment cards for items not on the agenda. The first of the four is from Pat Crock.
Good evening, Mayor Parkhurst and City Council members. I'm Patricia Crock from your Senior Community Commission. And first of all, belated Happy New Years. And thank you to all the first responders who helped save our town. I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's happening at the Park House this month and other little things that we're developing for the rest of the year. As the mayor so noted, the lunch program is in full swing, Monday through Thursday at 11:30. And to help enhance that program and maybe bring in a few more seniors, on occasion, we do little, what we call little lectures on things that are pertinent to the seniors. We had one recently on how to hang up on phone scammers and how to slam the door in front of door scammers. Hearing Health Center Clinic. And then, last week, there was a lung screening clinic for those victims of, well, everybody, the Eaton Fire Canyon smoke. And if you qualified, you were given a free air filter. And so I qualified, so my husband's getting that for Valentine's. And I'm keeping his box to seize, so. And screening, air filters. And also, we had a lecture on the importance of enzymes in your nutrition. And these little mini lectures are just maybe a half an hour. And they're just fun and informative. February 27th, we've got a senior tour booked to go to the Reagan Library to tour the Dead Sea Scrolls. This coming Thursday, the Valentine Social, 3 o'clock at the Park House. Lots of food, lots of fun, raffle prizes, and just a good time for everyone. Nominations for the Older American are out through the city. And that event will be held in May. There'll be more information on that as we move along. March, we're planning a tour of the Academy of Motion Picture Museum for the seniors. Bingo's coming up on February 20th at the Hart Park House. And we discussed at our last meeting, for the month of March, having an income tax professional there at least one day a week to help seniors prepare their income taxes. Any of this information is available on the Senior Moments newsletter. You can call the Park House at 626-355-7, no, that's my number. 626-355, what is it, 5278? And get put on the Senior Moments newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Crock. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker card is from Steve Palmer.
Good evening. My name is Steve Palmer. I live at 255 North Hermosa Avenue, across from the Sierra Madre Elementary School Field. You'll have to pardon me for trying to read this very quickly, as I have 20-plus years, excuse me, dealing with this situation, trying to distill it down to three minutes. I'm here tonight to express my concerns about the increased use of the elementary school field by the various Sierra Madre baseball teams and the impact it's having on our neighborhood. My wife and I purchased our home in 1977. We've seen the field evolve over the past 48 years from a mostly dirt-filled with weeds to a multi-use baseball field. Over the past 20 years, we've met with city officials and baseball representatives to come up with solutions that enable teams to play in the field while lessening the negative impact on our neighborhood. Unfortunately, we've only seen an increase in traffic congestion, parking problems, and an increase in noise levels throughout the years. Currently, the Sierra Madre Little League Baseball site lists seven baseball fields as open as of this morning. Heasley, Sierra Madre Elementary School, Sierra Madre Middle School, Lujeski Field in Arcadia, Draper Field, Blair High School, and Bonita. In March of 2023, we met with a Sierra Madre Girls Baseball Rep. He told us the field at the middle school was not being used, excuse me, because it needed a major upgrade for proper drainage. I went over to the middle school field last March after a heavy rain. It appeared to me that it was only minor runoff, which could easily be repaired by one or two people within a short period of time. The rep also told me the upgrade would be of no cost to the school or the school district. He also said that the school and school district seemed only vaguely interested in pursuing the upgrade. As mentioned earlier, this field is listed as open on the Sierra Madre Little League Baseball site. Last February, I met with Deputy City Manager Laura Aguilar to express our concern. She said the baseball league needed $100,000 for the upgrade at the middle school, but the league needed $100,000 first to upgrade the lights at Heasley Field. I asked if some of the impact could be mitigated by disseminating some of the games to the other fields, not having games on Sunday, and that the coaches not playing music during the games as the noise of the teams and parents was already more than sufficient. Unfortunately, none of these items seem to be addressed. I should mention that the baseball league issued a memo asking people not to park on Hermosa. While I appreciate the gesture, it had little effect. And even if it did, it would only push the problem to another neighborhood. The league also said the school parking lot on the other side of the school would be open. I've checked several times during games and the gates were locked. And even if the people did park there, the primary problem to me of the noise issue would still exist. Okay, let's see. At one of our meetings years back, a person, oh, shoot, okay. Well, let's see. In summary, I just want to make it clear, we are not against games at the elementary school. We hope to see some games directed to the other open fields, no games on Sundays, and no music during the games. It would be great to see the city and baseball community have some awareness and consideration of the impact that the games are having on our neighborhood. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to flub this last name because I'm having trouble reading it. But the first name is Brenda and the last name is Walco, Walco, Walcoitz? Thank you.
Hello, this is my first time here. So I live at 229 North Hermosa, directly on the corner, right across from the Sierra Madre Elementary Field. I'm just kind of highlighting what Steve said, all those concerns. And my house is like directly impacted on the weekends, the noise. The trash has been better, but the music playing, the noise, the traffic. I have three cars. I'm able to park one in the garage and I have two other cars, me, my son, and my partner. So during the week, when I come home from work, and my son comes home from college, we, it's very hard for us to park in our area. I either have to park a couple streets over until they're, until they leave and they're cleared out, or I don't have anywhere to park. Also, the field was, it seems like our community, we're not even allowed to use the field. And there's a sign outside that I wanted to read real quick. That said the community should be able to use it when the youth isn't there and when the school is not there. But it's always locked. And I used to walk that field, run that field, and now we can't even use it. The community can't even use the field on the times that nobody else is there because it's always locked. So anyway, that's kind of been a big issue. But especially the parking and the traffic. I would just hopefully try to find some kind of help with, you know, what we can do as a community. We can't even use the field anymore. Our parking is impacted and the noise. Just, and want the families coming in, the baseball families, softball families, to just kind of respect our, the noise level too and not play any music. I came out one Saturday morning at 9:00 in the morning because they were playing music. And it's Saturday morning, 9:00. So I went out there and told them to please stop. And they did. And just want, want to keep up on that and stuff. Anyway, these are my concerns. And it's hard because it impacts my, as a resident here, I feel like I have a lot of issues with the field and the baseball and softball. I mean, I understand, you know, having to do it. But I'm wondering if they could use the other fields like Steve had mentioned and stuff. And just the families be respectful of our neighborhood and the people who live there and that type of thing. Anyway, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Quick question, ma'am. What, this increased activity and noise we're hearing about, is this just started this season? Was this taking place last year?
Oh, God, no, it's been going on for years. And it's gotten worse the last, yeah, since the pandemic.
So it hasn't really gone up this year any more than last?
Oh, well, no, it has, it has. We had a little break with the fires and stuff, but now it's back. And not only do they have practice during the day, during the, like, late afternoons. So during the week, it's hard for me to even park. And then Saturdays, they have baseball, and then Sundays, they have softball too. So you have, we're having, you know, the traffic, the parking.
So this particular year is a little bit worse than previous?
I think it's gotten worse, like, slowly every year, yeah, yeah. We just would like for them maybe to use some of the other fields and just to be respectful of our neighborhood and stuff while they're there.
Thank you, Ms. Walcoitz. Madam Clerk, any other?
Yes, thank you. The final speaker card is from the City Librarian, City Librarian Regan.
Hello, Mayor Parkhurst and Mayor Pro Tem Lo and our Honorable City Council. I'm Leila Regan, your friendly neighborhood city librarian. It is still One Book One City Month. So I just wanted to come back here and remind you of some of the events that are still happening for One Book One City. This Saturday, we have felting. If you don't know what felting is, I didn't either. So we'll all learn together. But we're having Craft It, which is something we haven't had at the library since we moved to our temporary. So you can come and learn how to felt and go home with something really neat or perhaps a new hobby. And we also have a One Book One City Play, the world's strongest librarian. That is going to be 7:00 p.m. on Monday, the 24th, at the Playhouse. We also have our second Sip and Shush, which is our silent book club. We had our first one at RT Rogers this past Saturday. It went really well. Big thank you to RT Rogers for letting our little group meet there and read quietly, which was nice. So that's essentially what a silent book club is. And we will be doing that Wednesday, the 26th, at 7:00 p.m. at RT Rogers. And to everyone who submitted their wonderful pieces about how libraries have impacted their life, we are working on publishing that book. And we're going to have a book signing and reading on Friday, February 28th. So hope you all can attend that. And we also have our One Book One City Third Thursday Book Club. So if you would like to discuss the book, this book club meets on Zoom. And that is going to be Thursday, the 15th, I believe, in my head, at 11:00 a.m. We do have some programs that are not One Book One City that we hope more people will attend. We have, tomorrow is our Caregiver Workshop. So you can come to the library. We have Love Bug, which is a really fun way to interact with your child. It's for ages 0 to 36. And that is tomorrow, Wednesday, at the library at 10:00 a.m. And then, on Thursday, we have our Sensory Play, which is for our wonderful children, ages 0 to 11, that would prefer to play in a quiet, controlled space. And we have exploratory toys available. And we are working on February 22nd. We will have an interior design with TSK Architects. We'll have a little town hall here in the City Council Chambers. Ooh, excuse me, City Council Chambers. And we will be live streaming that and recording it as well. So those are all the programs I believe I have. Thank you so much.
Just a clarification, there were two of the programs that was 0 to 36. Was that months or years?
Months.
And then, and then, then, and then the 0 to 11?
I'm so used to caregivers.
And the 0 to 11 is the?
Years.
There we go, okay, that's what I thought.
Thank you for catching that, I appreciate it.
No problem. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a request from Glenn Lambden to also speak.
Great.
Honorable Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Staff, Glenn Lambden, 444 Sturtevant. I'd like to bring your attention to our Municipal Code, Chapter 12.20.070. It's titled Duty of Abutting Landowners to Cultivate Trees on Public Property. I find this section of the code problematic in two ways. What it says and what it doesn't say. Basically, what it says is that property owners are required, private property owners are required to maintain publicly-owned trees on publicly-owned property. This is done by taking their financial resources, labor, and some materials for the benefit of the public without just compensation. My question really becomes, how is this not a Fifth Amendment taking? And I've asked the question to some council members. I've asked the question to staff and I received the same answer. I don't know. So if this is in fact where we are requiring and taking from a private individual for the benefit of the public, how is this not a Fifth Amendment taking? I think it's something that needs to be looked into. What this doesn't do, allow those residents that are encumbered with this special privileges, doesn't give them special privileges to add things to the public parkway. As a matter of fact, the code expressly prohibits putting anything that's an obstruction that could be on a public safety hazard. Elsewhere in the code, it prohibits the placement of certain items on this. Where I'm having a problem with this is I've addressed this with staff and staff has told me that because of the encumbrance, it's only fair that the homeowners should be allowed to put things on there that they want. Problem is, when staff determines that they're going to create policy, it circumvents the legislative authority that we have granted to you, our elected leaders. It is never staff's position to create policy or to ignore the policy that this council or previous councils have put into effect. So I would like, with this in mind, this is going to dovetail into a few of the other items that's on the agenda tonight and I'll speak to those. So I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambden.
Mr. Mayor, James Carlson is the next speaker.
Thank you very much. I didn't make the agenda, so I'm here for public comment and I will give myself three minutes. Just want to give you a quick update on mud preparations and then I'll introduce our chiefs. Sierra Madre Public Works Department has been working on preparations of mud and debris since the beginning before the Eaton fire was even out. We've coordinated the debris removal from high priority basins, including the Sierra Madre Dam. And that was a job that took 2,500 truckloads to get that debris basin ready for the upcoming storms. We've installed what I refer to as best management practices. Those are BMPs. Those can be structural. They can be also activity. Examples include K rails or sandbag walls. It also includes inspections and maintenance of storm drains and a number of other structures throughout the town. In an effort to meet anticipated demands for debris and mud management, staff has met with the county in daily task force meetings since the beginning. We have also acquired the services of the past public works director with 37 years of institutional knowledge through Will Dan Services. Decisions regarding where to locate BMPs have evolved throughout the process. Public Works crews are familiar with the areas of concern as well as locations that are intuitively needed to be addressed. This week, staff has actually also referred to the Watershed Emergency Response Team. It's called a WRT report that was published by the state and put out on February 4th. And then this week, the city has received the county's Phase 1, 2, and 3 mud flow prediction maps. That provides us with additional hydrologic and engineering recommendations. The most common feedback that we are getting in the public works department is for a K rail to protect an individual's property. We take all requests and analyze the effectiveness of each area that K rails have been located. We want our community to know that staff will not place K rails on private property and we will not place K rails in the street if it would prevent access to areas for mud removal or the police and fire calls. We understand also the need to be nimble. This week will most likely provide us with the first instance of mud and debris flows. And we will analyze what we've been, what we've been planning for with our institutional knowledge and our engineers and our hydrologists and see how that compares with what we're seeing in real time. So we will keep moving. We don't have the set plan. I would like to introduce Chief Barrientos and Chief Bartlett, and they have an important announcement for you. And look, I just made it.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council. I'll provide you a little bit of an update to the upcoming storm. As we prepare for the incoming storm expected from this Wednesday through Friday, with Thursday posing the greatest risk, I want to emphasize the importance of vigilance and readiness. Our priority is and always will be the preservation of life followed by property. We have been proactive in addressing this potential threat. Several meetings have been held at the EOC, that's the Emergency Operations Center, to ensure our preparedness. And we have coordinated with Area D for additional support in the event evacuations become necessary. Our police, fire, and city teams, I mean, public works, city hall, et cetera, are fully engaged and are ready. We will continue to monitor conditions closely and keep the community abreast. I urge all residents to stay informed through the official city communications, Genesis, Nixel, city and social media platforms. And please have a plan in place and be ready to evacuate if conditions warrant. If an evacuation order is issued, please do not hesitate. Follow the direction to evacuate. Together as a community, we'll face these challenges with resilience and preparedness. Thank you, and this concludes. Any questions or anything?
Let's go ahead and get Fire Chief up here and then I'll take a moment to see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council members. Basically, what I'd like to add to Chief Barrientos' talking points are, yes, we've been working very diligently, very hard, excuse me, as a city to help mitigate any potential efforts. What I would like to bring to everybody's attention, and hopefully we've become very familiar with the Genesis Protect app, we used it during the fire. It is also a tool that is fluid and is able to be changed. So what I'd like everybody to understand is the zones that we were working with prior were fire zones. Each incident is going to have its own dynamics to it. Now we have adjusted some of the zones. They are basic, the base zones will remain the same, but we may have basically split some of the zones into an A, B, and potentially even a C. These are going to be the mud and debris, debris flow zones, which we have used the modeling that analyst Carlson has spoke to, to come up with these. So once again, we're going to ask folks to get onto this app. It's going to be a good point for you to know. Right now, we've put it all into an advisory in these blue sections here. And when the time comes, we can be changing those to an evacuation warning or an evacuation order. And you'll see that the zones will actually change colors. But you'll be able to, I don't know, James, you could pick just that to be there and click on that. It is basically, if you look at the left, it tells you it's in an advisory and it gives you the reason. Those reasons, right now, we've taken the liberty to go ahead and put those into a Phase 2 reason. So they do, they do follow LA County's mud and debris flow Phase 2 criteria or basically their definition. So it's a helpful tool for our residents to kind of take a look at. And mostly, we really want to let folks know, we have been planning and we have been prepping for this and we have identified some areas of concern and we want to make that known to our citizens so they can prepare. And as Chief Barrientos said, again, once the, and if, but any evacuation orders come, we're asking that you do please leave a residence. This is going to be a very different dynamic than the fire. We had a lot of residents did not heed the order for the fire evacuations, but this is going to be different. What I want people to know, at least from the fireside, is if we have active mud and debris flow, we are not responding in that area for an emergency, especially if you are under an evacuation order. You should not be there. We are not going to put public safety personnel into jeopardy in an active mud and debris flow. We will get there if we have the opportunity, but under an evacuation order, and again, I can't stress enough, when it's active, we're not going to put first responders in jeopardy. So please adhere to it. It's a different beast than a fire. Yes.
Is there anything else you have for your presentation?
No, sir. That was it.
Great, okay.
On that note, though, I have a question.
Yes, please.
So should anybody, even if they didn't evacuate, let's say it didn't evacuate, but we have active mud flow, should anybody try to mitigate an active mud flow?
No, and the fact is, and here's my suggestion, if we have active and you are still at home, then shelter in place. Do not try to leave. Stay in your home and hopefully stay in a safe location within your home, but do not try to leave during an active mud and debris flow. We've all seen news reels on this and it could be very devastating and very hazardous to life. So yeah, we don't, we don't, once the order will be given prior to any active flow as much as we can, we're going to anticipate it. We're watching, we're listening, and we're ready to give it, the evacuation order prior to hopefully any potential. So with as much notice as we get, we'll give the public.
Great.
So you're saying if you get caught, shelter in place, right?
Correct.
But when you say it's a different beast, somebody sitting in their house, when you have a mud flow above you, can you paint a picture of some of the potential problems with that? For them sitting in their house?
Sitting in your house, depending on your location, it could take out your whole house. And we won't be able to dig that out for quite a while, depending on the severity of it. I mean, it's all speculation at this point. We haven't seen it. Our city has never gone through an experience like this where a whole front country, basically from, you know, Mitchell, Linda, to San Anita, has never all burned at once, at least in the histories that any of us are aware of. And so therefore, we don't truly know what to expect other than historically, what have we seen on previous fires? But that's only been portions of our town. So we're just, we're asking people to expect for the, plan for the worst, but let's hope for the best. And again, if we do the evacuation order, please get out.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. And I opened up my Genesis Protect app and I see as I, so I'm Zone 14 and I've known that since you put this in front of us like 18 months ago. And as I zoom in, I see it's split in between A and B. So I want, I would just want residents to know that you kind of have to zoom in on your app to see if you're A or B, if there is a split. But my question is, one of my children goes to Mira High School and I drive through Altadena every morning and I would get alerts through, not Genesis, through Smart 911 that I'm entering different zones that have different warnings. Will those warnings push through Smart 911 as well? And I know we have our Nixels, which are really well connected with Genesis.
Correct. Smart 911, thank you for bringing that up. That is something that we've been trying to implement for quite a while now. It's gaining traction, but it is not completely there as an all encompassing notification tool. It, because, the reason I say that is it's an opt-in platform. So if you sign up for it, you will get those notices. And the beauty of it is, no matter where you're at in the state, you could be visiting relatives in the Northern California area. If they have this active, you're going to get notified for an area you're in, no matter what. It's just, it's all GPS tracking type of stuff and it will activate.
And that's what I've noticed as I drive. You are now entering a zone that's under evacuation warning and it will alert me to that, yeah.
Correct. And the same, the same kind of applies for the Genesis Protect. You can type in your address. It'll tell you what zone you're in. Or even if you move to another zone, for instance, if everybody opened up this app right now, we'll all be in the same zone, different than where you're, where you may, where you may live. But you can also save one of the zones as your favorite. So even if you're not home, you can, which is the great part about it, when we have to repopulate after evacuations, you can just go on this app and see what the status is without having to call the city, without having to, you know, get in line behind everybody else to find out what's going on.
And I know that, well, four of us, the five of us are usually here, our utmost concern is public safety. That being said, I know we've had, we've had some residents asking questions about AM 1630. Is that still not really active, not something to rely on at this point in time? I think it's important for our residents to know exactly where they should look and what they should rely upon.
I may have to pass that off to maybe city manager, but my understanding, yes. It's not completely reliable yet because we do have some old equipment.
Old technology, yeah.
Where we cannot get those parts to repair it and make it fully functional at this point. And so what it is, is we've heard loud and clear that we try to, you know, the community wants us to communicate as best as possible for finding all the tools we can. Not, nothing's going to get replaced or thrown out. They're all tools in the toolbox. They're all applicable. Some might be more appropriate at a certain time. But the Genesis Protect, the Smart 911 app and Nixel, they're all going to be utilized if we have to. We can use them all in concurrency.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, may I add, some of the steps that we've taken is, on the website, in the next 24 hours, when you go on the website, this map will pop up. Also on the website, you can click on the Nixel tab and every Nixel alert is there for our residents. What I really want to stress is that right now, the zones that are listed in that light blue are advisory. And I want to stress to our residents that those will likely change to a warning in the next 24 hours. And there's a high probability that we'll have evacuation orders. So we want residents to be prepared, gather their documents, their pets, any medications, and make arrangements if you're in those areas for potential evacuation and relocation until this event, the storm event passes.
For mudslides, do we also operate under the Ready, Set, Go?
Correct.
And so where are we right now?
So right now, we are, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Yeah, it's a great question, Mayor. Thank you for serving that one up. We do basically still operate under Ready, Set, Go, the same we would under fire conditions. So I want residents to be advised, we do have an ordinance for basically yellow and red flags as well. If you see those, we'll have those basically strategically. Like Mary's Market, at the search and rescue station, at the fire station, we'll be putting out flags that correspond with either a yellow flag, which would be basically evacuation warning or the SET portion. And then the red flags, which mean a go or an evacuation order. And so those will go out. If we get to any red flags, whether they are mud and debris flow or where they're fire weather, red flags still will mean that we will implement the red flag parking restrictions within the appropriate areas as well. And that's the other thing that we definitely want folks to be aware of. When I say this is a different beast, once we issue those, even if your cars are parked in your garage or your parking spot that you may have, for instance, in the canyon, if we have heavy mud debris flows, you're not getting out, period. So just take that into consideration, even if you have a parking spot, maybe moving your vehicle out to a safer area. So if you do have to, you know, evacuate or even your second car or what have you, you have access to it. Just again, a suggestion when we implement the red flag parking restrictions.
Can we suspend parking citations? Are we still suspending parking citations currently?
That will go in conjunction with the red flag parking restriction. Again, that will be in advance of anything. So we do evacuation orders or the...
Well, I meant if you're parking your car further somewhere away from your house, you're not going to get a ticket, obviously. We're not going to take it.
Oh, I hear. I apologize. Yes.
Thank you.
Leave that up to my...
But the police chief told me to.
Thank you for the question, but Mayor Protem, yes, absolutely. We could, we'll put that on our social media that we will exempt all parking restrictions for overnight parking till next week, Monday.
And if we go into the go portion, you will have the police cars going up and using their loudspeakers to announce like they did during the fire?
Thank you for the question. That's correct. It's either going to be PA systems, door knocks. It just depends on the circumstance and obviously the terrain of the neighborhood.
And if residents want to get sandbags, where can they get them at this point?
Currently, the city is providing sandbags at the entrance to the public yards, public works yards. And there, you have to present ID, proof of residence to be there. And I think we're doing a limit still or no? 25. And then, James, you may be able to talk to us. I'm not sure if we still have some at Victory Park available as well, but...
Yeah, Victory Park is still a location. It's the same thing. They're a county entity, so Sierra Madreans are qualified to go to Victory Park for the same situation. 25 unfilled bags with an ID. Public Works has also strategically staged a few pallets of filled sandbags in some of the highest priority areas. I'm not going to tell you where that is because everybody would come and get them, but the people that see them in front of their house, those are for you.
And do we have any estimates on the number of bags that we've handed out? The number of K rails in whatever units make sense that we've done in preparation for this?
Yeah, you know, Director Yunes has a pretty good idea on that.
Great, thank you. Director Yunes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. We put out approximately about 52...
Uh, we put out approximately about fifty-two K rails, uh, in the north part of town. We have distributed over five hundred and fifty, um, unfilled, um, bags. We have placed approximately over one thousand filled sandbags at key, uh, areas throughout the north part of town.
Great. Thank you so much.
Just a, just a follow-up question regarding parking, and it might be in debris flow, so maybe Public Works is, is important. So sometimes with debris flow, our roads are used as diversion channels instead of, we're not gonna try to block tons, tons and tons of, of debris. So our roads are actually sometimes used. So if you leave your car on the road, and you're in an evacuation warning, that car could actually become, uh, a potential hazard to other people if it gets carried down the road. Is that, is that also true?
That is an excellent question, sir. Yes, the goal here is to flow the mud. Like a better term, we wanna help the mud along the street. Uh, should a car be left there? The mud flow, the pressure, the amount of volume that, that will be coming down the street there, we'll physically pick up the car, and then probably lodge it somewhere, then we have an issue. It'll be, it, a car dam.
Okay. So not, not, not only danger to property or life, uh, from that one moving car, but it could actually create other issues?
It could create an issue. It, it, it could lodge itself between, uh, between two other cars, uh, a tree, et cetera. Then now we have a problem where we're building up pressure, building up pressure, leading to a more serious problem, sir.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I have one more, uh, point that I'd like to invite Senior Management Ellis Carlson back to talk about Athens Pickup Service.
Yeah, I was in discussion with Athens today. If, if you don't know, uh, Athens services the, the upper and lower canyon areas on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And it's not a straight delineated line either. It's a little bit all over the place. Um, they will be picking up trash tomorrow and Wednesday. They will not be picking up trash on Thursday. Um, we just do not want trash cans in the road whatsoever. We don't want the Athens drivers, um, putting themselves in an unsafe position or getting in the way of some other things we might be trying to do. So no Athens collection in the canyon on Thursday.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other public comments?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the agenda, and we'll move on. Next item on the agenda are presentations. Um, and so our first presentation is to the Sierra Madre Search and Rescue. Um, so if we could get the search and rescue team to come up here. Uh, and I'm gonna come up to the podium up there.
They followed right where you said they were gonna go.
So before I start and give the, the certificate of recognition, I'd like to, I'll call up, uh, Bob Spears, the head of our EOC, and to have him start, kick us off, and then I'll read the, the pronouncement.
So, for those of you that remember, on January 7th, we were supposed to have a wind event. And we looked at it as it was going to be like, uh, 2011, when we had the big winds come through town. And we were doing really, really well with that up until about 6:18, when the fire broke out in Eaton Canyon. And suddenly, uh-oh, we were in a position, we were open, with the EOC was open, senior staff was there, we were managing the emergency very well. Uh, but then when the, uh, fire took off, all of our fire department was gone. They're, they're committed, all our police department is gone because they're committed. The county was evacuating parts of our city. And we were getting phone calls that we had people with disabilities, who would like to comply with the evacuation order, but they could not because their caretaker had left. And I'm looking around the room, and for those of you that don't know, the city of Sierra Madre has a rather flat org chart. So, uh, there weren't a lot of extra people, and we didn't wanna send a dump truck up with a Public Works guy, so the search and rescue people, we have been, we have been working with them in, in, in our EOC really, really well, and they've been incredibly supportive, and they said, "We can do this." So boom, up they go, they go out and rescue these, these people. They took them down to, to Pasadena, to the convention center where the, where they had the, uh, the, the big shelter. Did a great job. Came back and said, "You know, what else can we do?" "Oh, by the way, we have, we have the ability to map the entire fire area for you on CalTopo and come back and bring you the maps." And I'm looking like, well, that's something that takes days and weeks, and, and usually a county person. Boom, they're gone again, and they come back, you know, like twelve hours later, here's the map, here's the stuff. We had to go out and buy the software so we could read what they were doing. So these people should arrive on white horses, because they have literally contributed phenomenal expertise and time and skills to the citizens of Sierra Madre, and have done a great job in doing that. So I am very, very grateful that they are even in town. They are, they have an excellent attitude, they're wonderful, and they're a volunteer organization, which is near and dear to my heart. So thank you all very much.
Before you go, please, is there one more that they did after the fire as a part of the repopulation plan? Weren't they doing something with, with, with checking out the homes and all of that?
They helped do that, but, but they're, when they prevented it, provided us with CalTopo maps, we're looking at where all the houses are that were burned. We, we had information about what was going on in our city before the county and everyone else, and we were able to give them to, to the planning department, here's your map, here's everything that's going on. It was, it was phenomenal. They went around the, those buildings, not only did they take pictures of the, of the destroyed buildings, but the, the areas around them, so, and they were all linked to the map. We, I mean, we, we couldn't have asked for a, a, a more professional and in-depth service. And they did it for free out of their own goodwill, so...
That couldn't be a better way to kick this off. So here we've got a certificate of recognition, uh, for the search and rescue. I'm gonna go ahead and read it. Uh, so, uh, it says, whereas the city, that, whereas the Sierra Madre Search and Rescue Team has long been a pillar of strength, dedication, and bravery, providing volunteer lifesaving assistance to those in need throughout our community and beyond. Whereas, during the devastate, devastating Eaton Fire, which threatened homes, livelihoods, and the natural beauty of Sierra Madre, SMSR responded with unwavering commitment, working tirelessly alongside other first responders to ensure the safety of our residents and protect our city. Whereas, the selfless efforts of the team, including providing evacuation assistance, search and rescue operations, mapping the disaster and critical support for emergency personnel, played a vital role in mitigating the impact of fire on our community. Whereas, despite the destruction caused by the fire, the courage, professionalism, and expertise of SMSR provided hope and reassur, reassurance to those affected, exemplifying the highest ideals of service and sacrifice. Whereas, the city of Sierra Madre recognizes and honors the extraordinary contributions of the Sierra Madre Search and Rescue Team, whose actions during the Eaton Fire were instrumental in protecting lives and reinforcing resilience, uh, of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the, the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre extends its deepest gratitude and highest commendation to the Sierra Madre Search and Rescue Team for their bravery, dedication, and invaluable service during the Eaton Fire and beyond. Their heroic actions will always be remembered and appreciated. Presented this 11th day of February, 2025, by the City, by the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre, Mayor Robert Parkhurst, Mayor Protem Christine Lowe, Councilmember Edward Garcia, Councilmember Gene Goss, and Councilmember Kelly Crebs.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. Um, on behalf of the contingent I have here, and the other thirty-plus members of the team that we have, we're more than happy to call this city home. We have done since nineteen fifty-one, and, uh, provide the service that we can to the city. We know we've got ongoing flooding, uh, which is, or not ongoing, but potential flooding, and we'll be working with City and, and the Fire Chief there on, on plans, and with Bob Spears as well, making sure that we coordinate any responses. We'll sort of follow the same protocols and guidelines that they've already, uh, sort of laid out, apart from active flooding, not putting people in there. We're a volunteer organization, but we're more than happy to, uh, assist the city as we can moving forward, and we really appreciate, um, this honor, and this will go up on our wall in the station. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like the council to come up and join for this.
Okay.
Anyone ever here? Yes. Come on in, fill in the form here. We've got the, the logo in the background. That's okay.
You're all right, you're all right.
Don't worry about that.
You're all right, Mike.
All right, so let's see if we can, if all of them can...
Okay, but, okay, you're not... I'm gonna, I'll, I'll do this. I'll do this. You're all right. I'll do this. I'll do this.
All right. Can we get Gene's face at least in it too?
Yeah, it's yellow, right?
Good, all right. Did you get a good one?
Gone?
Good. Excellent.
I'm not making you laugh. I just...
I'm not very much...
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, guys. Get ready, get ready for the next phase. We'll be thanking you again, and it probably is me. How you guys? Thank you.
I think we'll be excused.
Thanks, everybody.
So now we have a second, uh, proclamation to, to make tonight. Uh, so this one is for, uh, our former City Treasurer, Michael Mario, Mariel. Uh, so let me read this one out. Whereas, Michael Mariel has faithfully served as the City Treasurer for, for Sierra Madre since 2016, demonstrating unwavering dedication, professionalism, and integrity in overseeing the city's financial stewardship. During his ten, tenure, Michael Mariel has established and managed the city's investment program, creating sustainable funds that strengthened Sierra Madre's financial future and ensured responsible fiscal growth. He has been instrumental in the thorough review and approval of the city's warrant packages, ensuring transparency, accountability, and sound financial decision, decision-making for the benefit of all residents. Whereas, his leadership, expertise, and commitment to public service have, have earned him the respect and gratitude of city officials, colleagues, and the people of Sierra Madre. Whereas, as he concludes his tenure as City Treasurer, we recognize and honor Michael Mariel for his years of dedicated service and contributions to the city's financial health and his lasting impact on our community. Now therefore be it complaint, be it proclaimed, that the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre expresses its deepest appreciation to Michael Mariel for his exceptional service, financial expertise, and invaluable contributions, wishing him continued success and fulfillment in all future endeavors. Presented this 11th day of February, 2025, by the City Council of the City of Sierra Madre, Mayor Robert Parkhurst, Mayor Protem Christine Lowe, Councilmember Edward Garcia, Councilmember Gene Goss, and Councilmember Kelly Crebs. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, th- thank you. Yeah, the last time I was up here was about ten years ago, and I'm still smiling from thinking about that. We had just won, uh, Little League Championship. But anyway, you know, um, when I wanted to become City Treasurer, it was to look into some stuff. I was pissed. You know, I wasn't happy with some elections, I wasn't happy with what City Council was doing in an area, and I still aren't happy on an election. But what I, what, what I learned from it was, the city staff is just incredible. To think that, uh, a, a, a city could have such dedicated, hard-working, thinking about the city first. We, um, you know, when we, uh, when we coach kids in baseball, you know, we always say, "Play for the team first." And, uh, I'll tell you, the Sierra Madre has a staff that plays for the city first, and very, very fortunate. So it was really a, um, a rewarding experience, and, uh, I appreciate the opportunity. I think I worked with probably three city, um, three city managers, at least three finance directors, but through, through all of that, none of it, none of it changed. Just very, very, um, enamored and, um, just kind of in awe in their dedication. Bugged me a lot to get stuff done. I had a few other things going on, but, um, through it all, appreciate the opportunity and, and thank you.
Thank you. So Mike, before Sue Spears put her name in, I, I, I was gonna, that's Chris Lowe. I was gonna add your name anyways to the next ballot, but Sue Spears took care of it, but I was really writing your name down, forcing you into it.
And, and by the way, for, for, um, I, I've mentioned this too. I'm always happy to help in any way I can, so thank you.
Thank you for your service, Michael. Thank you.
All right. We are on to, uh, the consent items. So, City Clerk, would you please read the consent items by title only?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, the City Council is asked to consider four items this evening. Consent item A is the consideration of Resolution 25-12. That's approving certain demands, and it's staff's recommendation that the City Council approve, uh, Resolution 25-12. Consent item B is the City Treasurer's report for the quarter ending December 31, 2024. It is recommended that the City Council receive and file this informative report. Consent item C is a consideration of approving Amendment Number One, extension of services for the professional services agreement to Tate Snyder Kimsey, Inc., also known as TSK Architecture Services, for the library project in the amount not to exceed nine hundred one thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars for the remainder of the fiscal year 24, 25, and into also fiscal year 25, 26. And it is staff's recommendation that the City Council approve Amendment Number One. And lastly, can, uh, consent item D is the consideration of Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Willdan Engineering for Fire Marshal, Fire Plan Review, Fire Code Official, and Fire Inspection Services. Staff also recommends that the City Council approve Amendment Number Two to the Professional Services Agreement with Willdan Engineering. Mr. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Do we have any questions on consent item A? Consent item B? Consent item C?
I will have some questions.
Consent item C, please.
All right, so, uh, this is for the extension of, uh, TSK. Um, and my first question was, um, is this extension because we are behind it all? Or is this because of the extension we got for the grant itself?
Thank you for the question. It is because we got the extension of the grant itself. Uh, in the original, when, when this project began, uh, two and a half years ago, give or take, uh, the original, uh, grant agreement was for January of 2025. And then we were very fortunate to receive the extension into next year. Uh, that is the reason. At the same time, after discussing, uh, the project itself with TSK, they are very much committed. They, uh, are staying on board to see the part, the project through, which is the norm for, for a project of this magnitude.
My second question is, is the nine hundred and one thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars, is that an amount added to this, to this contract we previously had? And also, where's that funding coming from?
No, ma'am. This, this is the original agreed, uh, dollar amount from the original contract agreement. And this, uh, funding is coming through the, uh, awarded grant by, by the state of California.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions on item C? Item D? All right.
I have some questions on item D too.
Okay.
That would be for the Willdan Engineering for Fire Marshal, Fire Plan Review, and Fire Code Official, and Fire Inspection. Um, so just to clarify, the increase from a hundred and thirty-five thousand to three hundred thousand is spanned over a four-year span? And when is that contractual date ending?
I will defer that to, uh...
Thank you.
Planning manager?
I think it's Director Lynn now, is that right?
Did you not tell anybody?
And congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protem. Um, so the contract will remain the same, um, duration, the four-year expand from, um, 2023 to 2027.
Okay, great, thank you. And this might be back for one of you, and I, I'm sure you won't have the ability to add this now, but one thing I'm curious about is looking at the amount, um, that we're paying to Willdan, and how much would it, uh, cost us to be able to have our own Fire Marshal in Sierra Madre instead of contracting it out to Willdan?
Great questions, that I do not have exact number for at this point. Um, we are, we are assessing that currently, and, uh, and we'll be able to look at it. But I would like to make, uh, notice that the con... But I would like to make notice that the contracted services that we have for our fire marshal through Willdan is currently for the, you know, plan checking, doing field inspections, such as sprinkler inspections and things like that, as well as helping with, you know, code adoption and the like. The proposed public safety, or excuse me, community risk reduction officer would be a lot more encompassing to include all of those functions, as well as be involved in education to our community, be a liaison, not only to some of our civic clubs, but in education. But the Fire Safe Council that we're looking to start up, Fire Waste Community, would be a liaison between them, would help partner with them as well. And so it's a very encompassing job. We would even have them looking at doing, again, community risk reduction. So we, most of our calls are EMS. We could work with our EMS coordinator on the number one thing, which happens to be probably gravity in this town. We have a lot of falls. Can we help educate some of our senior community on stuff like that? So it's, it is almost apples to apples, but it might be a Macintosh to, you know, Granny Smith type.
I absolutely agree. That would be great.
So the pricing will be a little bit different, but we are assessing what we would look at for that job description and what we would actually offer somebody.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Consent Item D? All right. Now I'd like to open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards for public comment for this item?
Not for the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Seeing no one come forward on it, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I know this is a city treasurer's report from city treasurer Sue Spears, but there's some remnants of Michael Mario in here that I just want to highlight and thank him for while he's still. So it was, there was a time very recently, and let's say two, three years ago, when the LAIF funds, the local agency investment fund, was earning less than a percent. And so we have a lot of reserves. Instead of just putting them in a bank account, why not invest them and earn some investment income, some interest? Then there was a, it's followed by a time when the U.S. Treasury government securities, especially on the shorter term to maturity, six months, a year, two years, were yielding 4%, sometimes close to 5%. And it's my understanding from talking with staff that it was Treasurer Mario that said, hey, these are risk-free. We can ladder these bonds. And if we hold them maturity, we're guaranteed this return rather than just having it in LAIF funds. It doesn't need to be that liquid. Yeah, we're gonna get tenths of a percent on the stuff where we need liquid, but on this other stuff that we may not need for six months or two years, let's earn 4% or 5% on that. And so just given that, we earned an investment income. We can't rely on it, but we earned hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not a million dollars or more, due to that decision. So I just want to thank City Treasurer Mario for being nimble and thinking a little bit outside the box of what we normally did and changing our investment strategy to make us some money while he could. So that's my comment on that. So thank you, City Treasurer.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you bringing that up. I was gonna make a mention of his service there, and you did it far better than I could. Thank you so much. Any other discussion on the consent items? Great. So then I will look for a motion to approve the consent items?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will move on now to our first public hearing. And so I'd like to call up EMS Captain Bustillos to present the schedule adjustments for the Sierra Madre Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. Thank you for taking.
Captain Bustillo, thank you. You read my mind.
I forget I'm short.
Wait, it's also, it's for the people at home. We want to make sure that they can hear.
Thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you today. I'm here on behalf of the Fire Department to request a few fee adjustments to the city's fee schedule. So we're looking for three additions, our EPCR fee, a dispatch fee, and a first responder fee. And then some adjustments to our current paramedic subscription program. So I will begin with our EPCR fee. We were on paper until 2018, when everybody converted to this digital format. So what you're seeing on the left side of the screen is our actual EPCR, Electronic Patient Care Report. And it kind of serves two purposes. It's gonna document all of the data that we collect on a call. So incident times, the resources that were there, any treatments that we gave, any type of intervention, and any medical data for the patient. The other side of that, it allows us for seamless transfer between agencies. So in times of automatic aid, everything that one report has started can be transferred to another department. It also allows for the transfer of that data to be moved to the hospital when we do transport our patients. And additionally, the Department of Health Services is able to see that data for their QA/HI purposes. So it just ensures continuity of care between all the agencies. So currently, we are using digital EMS. This is the provider for nearly everybody in the county. They do charge us $4.95 per EPCR completed. And we complete an EPCR for any patient assessment, whether it's transported or not. So the city currently subsidizes these costs for this EPCR use. So below there, you'll see the rate comparison for the agencies in LA County that are currently charging this fee and their associated fees on the right. So this is aside, just as an example of what the recovery cost could look like had that fee been implemented the last four years. So you'll see the year in reference, the call volume for that year. And had the fee been applied, that would be the recovery that we got. We're seeing about 10% increase in EMS calls every year. So taking that into account, for 2025, we're likely to reach 1,077 calls, which would equate to about 5,300 in revenue. And just a side note, I did not include 2021 in this, in the increased fees, in fees, because we had a significantly low call volume due to COVID. So this is our EPCR fee. We're looking to just place the cost of service for $4.95 into the fee schedule. If you have any questions on this one, if not, I'll move on to our dispatch fee.
So I had a quick question. So on the previous slide, so are these the fees that the cities are getting charged? Because we're getting a $4.95 fee. So why are the fees different on here? Is Arcadia getting a much better deal with them? And is Downey, like, what are they including in their fee? Because it's quite a bit more.
Thank you for that question. Everybody's getting charged $4.95. So you will see some departments charging for profit on there, and then others that maybe just have not updated their fees on their fee schedule.
So I'm gonna turn to city attorney. I thought you couldn't charge for profit on these.
Yeah. I know, I don't, they're probably incorporating other costs in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what those other costs would be, but I don't think they could, I don't think they could turn a profit on this one.
Got it. Okay.
Just for clarification, and definitely not speaking for any of our neighboring agencies, but it could have been some sort of assessment on staff time that they increased those fees. Don't know if we would technically use the term of for-profit, but I'm sure it was assessment again on staff time, and they adjusted as they saw accordingly, just as we recently have done citywide through our fee schedule.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, moving on. This is gonna be our dispatch fee. So we're currently dispatched through Verdugo Communications. They've been dispatching our fire and EMS calls since 1999. They're gonna service 13 fire departments in LA County. It's gonna be all of our surrounding agencies. So anytime somebody in Sierra Madre calls 911, that phone call is gonna go to our PD dispatch. If they deem that a fire-related call, it will go to Verdugo, who will collect the data from the caller and dispatch the appropriate resources. They are currently charging $84.18 per dispatch.
Really quick, is that on top of another contractual price that we pay?
No. So it's $84.18 per call. And so the fees that I've seen that we've paid out have matched that. I don't know outside of that if there's another.
No, I mean, do we pay for their services? And then this is also what they charge per call?
From what I, oh.
Great questions. Actually, this is what we will see. They base that off of the previous year's call volume. They will get together their board or their guiding entity, and they will assess these fees. That is the current fee for this year. It hasn't changed from last year. However, they will revise the agreements that we all have with them. And that just basically comes out to what the average call is. So to answer your question, the fees that we pay them, that's incorporated in there. So for instance, if we ran 1,500 calls last year, it'd be multiplied times the $84.18, and that would be the fee we pay them. So it's basically just a pass-through fee that we're looking to try and implement.
Does it matter if it comes to where you, which entity is responding or where the call is coming from? So let's say you're responding to Arcadia. We don't get that charge necessarily, because even if we respond to that call.
We would, as far as the dispatch fee, for instance, the EMS calls, we would get that fee. As well as the EPCR fees, if we respond to another city, we will, again, that's, it's more of a pass-through charge than anything else. We're just trying to recoup what we're being charged for the service.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the rate comparison for LA County for the departments that are currently charging a dispatch fee as well. And again, we're just asking for that cost of service at $84.18 to be added.
Captain Bustillo, in both the staff report and your presentation, the dollar amount is $84.14? I know it's only four cents, but I just noticed there was a little discrepancy there.
Thank you.
Are we, we're gonna ask for $80?
$84.18, yes. Yeah. So same slide with all the same rules applied. This would be just an example of what that would look like had the fee been in place the last four years. We're seeing approximately 8% increase in calls year over year. So 25 would likely reach 1,666 calls, equating to about a little over 140,000.
So a question on that. Does that mean that there are some calls that we have that don't use EPCR?
That's correct. If we do not do an assessment on the patient, we will not do an EPCR. But this is for a dispatch fee. So we are getting the dispatch fee on a recall.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah. Okay. Last fee would be the first responder fee. So as you may know, in 2024, we converted our paramedic assessment engine to a medic engine. So now we provide the city with two full ALS units, 24/7. So basically, that engine looks exactly like the RA without the capability to transport. So in order to do this, we had a representative from LA County Department of Health Services come out. They did an audit of our engine and deemed it, the rig fit for service. There are only a handful, if at most, of medic engines in LA County. So it's a little bit of a big deal for us. And doing that transition, it did incur some costs for us. And those costs are gonna be initial costs. And for the, to, the indicator emblems to recognize the engine as a paramedic engine, some addition of equipment that are multi, or not single-use, like backboards, air splints, things like that. And then also those reoccurring costs that are gonna happen on all our calls that will encompass medical supplies, medications, IVs, bandages, things like that. So we'll be looking at those costs continually, continuously. And so just to give you an example, if Engine 41 was to respond outside of the city, say to Arcadia for an ankle fracture, the engine currently would respond. They would start their EPCR. They would treat that patient, give medication, start an IV, splinting. And then, once the RA, Arcadia's RA arrived, Arcadia would take over that patient, continue care to the hospital, and they would be, have the billing rights to that call. So we would not see any recoup costs for that. And to the other side of that, same thing happens if it's within our city and our engine responds, and we have an outside agency coming in to transport. Billing rights are with that transporting agency. So we would see no recoup on those costs either. So we are looking to implement a fee of $189. And this is going to be charged only when the engine responds alone without our RA. So if it was with an outside agency's RA, it would be charged. The $189 was a previous rate that we had in the fee schedule. That was removed in 2020, when we increased some of the assessment fees for RA 41. But now being that is a medic engine, we would like to re-implement that fee. And these are the three agencies that are currently charging a first responder fee as well. And again, just an example of what recoup costs would look like for the previous years. Really no trend in engine-only calls. So I just took the average of 2022 through 2024, and that gave us 42,477.
Can I ask you a question? When we charge people this, is this covered by their insurance? Is this that extra amount that's not covered by their insurance?
It is, these are all gonna be pass-through fees. So likely not covered through insurance, depending on the insurance as well. So just to tie everything together, all of those fees added together, you're looking at that middle column for cost recovery. Historically, Sierra Madre collects about 79% through billing services. So that 79% is applied. You'll see the outcome on the right. So based off of those 2025 assessments, with that 79% collection fee rate applied, we're looking at nearly 150,000 in cost recovery. That added to our, the 600, that 600,000 that we currently collect through medical aids, we're looking for cost recovery close to 3/4 of a million dollars.
That's insurance and everything put together?
Yes. And so we're looking to implement these fees beginning March 1st, 2025. And lastly is our paramedic subscription program. So our current program is not utilized as much as we would like it to be. A cost of ambulance, especially ALS ambulance, is at minimum $3,200, and that's without any additional fees, depending on the call and the treatment. And so that's typically not completely covered by insurance. So that's gonna result in out-of-pocket fees for the residents. So members of the program are assured that those costs are covered by the city, and they will not see any out-of-pocket expense. So currently, we have about 553 subscribers. That's about a 5% usage rate, so it's fairly low. So we've created some various plans in order to help bring down costs for residents and encourage usage. And these are the plans we'd like to implement. The single plan would still remain at $89, and that is for the year. The couple plan for a two-member household, it's gonna just be a 20% reduction. So $142 for two people, or 71 a person. A family plan for a three-member household, so it's gonna be $158, $56 a person, each additional member 18, and we would cap that at five people. A business plan, so 10 employees, would be $100, and any additional 10 employees would be another $100. And a low-income plan for an entire household for qualifying residents would be 45 for the entire household.
Are there other cities that have subscription programs? And is our enrollment rate similar, our prices similar? Can you tell us a little bit about kind of, as you did a benchmark on this?
There are many agencies that do have a subscription program. They kind of vary from 45 to the highest I've seen was 180. So we're kind of in the middle. But not too many offer the business and family plans. I've only seen about two other departments that do that.
Other questions?
I have a few.
Go for it.
I have one, too.
All right. Thank you.
So I think you kind of answered it within your presentation, but, so these fees, extra fees won't only be, aren't only assessed when there's. aren't only assessed when there's transportation. So if there's a call and there's a PCR put together and goes through dispatch, somebody would be charged roughly ninety dollars and they're not transported?
So the EPCR fee is four dollars and ninety-five cents, so that would be a charge. The, the dispatch fee, eighty-four eighteen, that would be a charge as well. And then the assessment fee, definitely because we do, even though we don't transport patients, we do treat patients. And sometimes we treat them and leave them at home, so we're still utilizing those supplies.
Okay, and so I'm just like running scenarios through my mind. Let's say a kid gets hurt at the park, no parents around, you come and, I'm assuming you can provide service to a kid gets hurt, and then how do you kind of follow up on that?
So everything is documented in our EPCR, and that goes to our billing company. It's the outside billing company, Whitman, and so they will handle the charges for us.
But let's say little Garcia's at the park and moming daddy Garcia after work. How do you, how do you follow up when, you know, it's like an eight-year-old child and you don't have their information? Or is that not, do we kind of let those kind of slide, or?
We, we gather all the information we can, so it's, we, we can put in that patient's information, and then based off address and other personal information, we can get those bills out.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, I guess that was one and two. The other question is, so since we're thankfully in automatic aid, let's say you are a member of the subscription program, but the city of Arcadia transports you. Do they honor our subscription program, and do we honor theirs? And how, how does that work? Is there reciprocity there?
Yes, the city will honor any transports made in Sierra Madre from an outside agency.
And outside agencies honor our program as well?
That I'm not sure about.
For example, Arcadia does honor ours, and reciprocity is there for, for us as well, for them. Pasadena would be the same, so those are pretty much the two. Occasionally, we will have somebody from San Marino or Alhambra. But if we have subscription members, then we will work with that agency to, to see if we can have them write, basically have a write-off for it. But I, most of ours are gonna be Arcadia, and we do, we do have that partnership with them.
Yeah, that's all I have. Wonderful staff report, by the way. I don't know if you put it together.
Thank you.
Very easy to read, very comprehensive, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
I, I just wanted to get some commentary from staff on the overall budgetary impact of this. Seems like we're raising fees by about a hundred and forty-nine thousand in a calendar year, budgetary year. And I'm, I'm not seeing that we're getting anything for that other than we're just reimbursing ourselves for things that we're already spending money on, right? So that's gonna, that's a net plus of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. How are we gonna actually use that, those funds? Is that gonna be addressing other issues we have in the fire department, I hope?
That will have to go as part of our budget cycle and, and taking up with our finance director and city manager. It, it's basically, it is definitely there should we have the need to increase the budget. Or basically, our budget is subsidizing all these costs as it is. So at best, my expectation would be that it would just recoup that cost. Now, should we have a need for additional funding within the department, it is another resource that can be looked at to help offset those costs. But again, that's gonna be part of our, our budget cycle and budget talks every fiscal year.
But it does go in the general fund, right?
If I may add, the, the funds do go into the general fund. During our, our budget process, we determine what the needs and priorities are of the organization. And during those times, we'll be looking at each department, including the fire department, to see if additional resources are needed. Currently, we're running a projected deficit, so this is gonna help shore up that deficit, but will also be used in consideration for, for the needs of the general fund.
Thank you.
I had one last question, and I've asked staff this way back when I just, well, way back, it's only two years ago, when I started on council, is when the original subscription plan was written, I believe it was two thousand eight, maybe prior council members might remember this, and I believe maybe also other prior firefighters who are here, remember this. It was written in that if you are a retired Sierra Madre firefighter, you were waived the fee for the subscription fee. And the premise was because you volunteered your time, full-time, up to fifteen years or more, that this subscription fee would be waived. Now, we've never found the report, we've had lots of, obviously, we weren't digital back then. And I was really hoping that maybe we could include that in this. And I, I don't know if that's, are we allowed to do, we're allowed to, we're not allowed to add fees without, but we can waive fees, correct?
So, so that, that's correct generally. If, if you're going to impose a fee, there has to be some kind of study or some, some kind of information to, to support that fee so we can justify that we're just recovering costs and we're not returning a profit. You can exclude groups from the fee, but there has to be a, a rational basis for it that's based on some, some kind of, some public rationale. So it, it can't be because we like these individuals.
No, yes.
Right? It has, it has to be because they provided some service, just for example, provided some service to the city. It's the city's benefit because they will contribute volunteer hours in the future. So it's, it's possible.
I just thought that, you know, and it was written into the prev, the original documentation, if you find it, says that it is waived for Sierra Madre Fire Department retirees, and that's fifteen years or more, not people who resigned earlier than that. So I would like that to be added because the people that served before nine, two thousand nineteen, and that served for fifteen years or more, served for up to forty hours a week for free for the city.
Does that, do we need to make any changes to the, we're, we're still in questions here, right?
Yeah, but I'm kind of wondering if that we can do that, so my question is, can we do that?
Yeah, it, I, I think it's, it's probably possible, but my, my, because I feel like I need to study this, it'd be my recommendation to move forward with as written, and then, and then, and then amend it at some future date.
Right.
To the extent, you, you said you've, you've searched for this document and it.
Well, I've asked staff to search, and I searched, and I couldn't find it. But that was before we really digitized all of our agendas, and I'd have to go through all of the reports. And I was trying to go through all of two thousand eights and all of two thousand sevens, trying to figure out when we started the subscription plan versus when we started paramedic services.
Right, because if we're using that document as a justification and we can't find it, it, it's troubling me.
Okay.
Especially if we haven't done a thorough search yet, and I don't know that we have.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions? Great, then, thank you very much. I'd now like to open this up for public comment. Do we have any public comment cards on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have no submissions for testimony on the public hearing.
Great, then I'll go ahead and bring it back for council discussion. Thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I'd like that we now have a family plan. That's gonna help quite a few people want to get involved in this and, and use this service. So I, that's something that's encouraging. Trying to wrap my head around, I probably should ask the question, why, I'm sure there was a study of businesses aren't as frequent, but why can, why do businesses get a hundred dollars and up to ten people, and families are more expensive for three people? But I'm, I prob, it's probably because businesses don't, their employees aren't as frequently having medical, medical issues as a family would, right? So I think I'm answering my question. But I liked, I like that we have more of a menu now, which opens, opens it up for more people taking advantage of the subscription program. And I always, always love that we're, we're recruit, we're recouping some of our, our hard costs. We're not charging extra for the service, we're just trying to recruit pass-through costs that we're being charged ourselves. So I think, I like the way it's formatted.
Great, other discussion, comments?
I'd be, I'd feel better about this if I knew that we could do better than five percent, you know, participation in the, in the subscription plan. I think when people, when word gets out, we might see an uptick by a few percentage points. But this is a very substantial cost increase for people who find that their insurance is not covering them. And it's almost three hundred bucks. And for some people, that's, that's a, that's a game changer, so, you know, I, I get the fact that we need budget help. There's no question about it, so I'm gonna support it for that reason. But, gosh, I do agree with you, Councilmember Garcia, that the family plan is very enticing. So I'm hoping that maybe if we market this, we can get fifteen percent, twenty percent, something like that, people who might reasonably, you know, have a probability of needing something like this, so that maybe they get caught and protected. Just, you know, going over these costs, the total costs for transports, gosh.
Four grand, right? Yeah, and in our household, my decision is, do I just cover me? And the kids don't need it, my wife doesn't need it, she's younger than me, you know, so you make those. But when there's a family plan, it, to your point, I think we'll, we'll get a higher subscription, hopefully get a higher subscription rate. Sorry, Council, uh.
No, it's okay.
Or Mayor Proton.
I was gonna inquire, when you go to pay for this, do you have to come to City Hall and pay for it? Or is there an online ability to sign up and pay? Because that would seem to me to really increase subscription when you don't have to come to City Hall, write a check, which I don't have.
Just a link, boom, then credit card.
Yeah, just online.
And auto payment for every year is also very.
Yes, auto renewal, which I don't think there is.
Please.
We are working on, on future. I think with the new Acela program, we will be able to work with the planning department to help implement some of our fees within that, the paramedic subscription program being one of them. Currently, it is a check that will come in, and we process that at the counter. And it is, I, I do believe for more signups, if we get this automated, it would be a lot better. And Councilmember Garcia, is I, I, definitely a recurring charge that maybe you could opt out of if you, if you choose to. Would just make it easier for, for folks to never have to worry about it. You're, you're covered until you, you opt out. We are looking at that, and, and we finally have the, the platforms and the tools, I think, to be able to implement that.
I think maybe the problem with, if we have fee increases in the future, we would need to notify everybody that's part of a re, recurring charge, that there's a fee increase, that might be a little bit problematic. But I, I really, it's, I don't, for my water bill, I love that I don't have to pay it every, it just gets paid, right? The business license, I don't have that, so I.
But it's now online, right?
Yeah, so, but still, I, I would prefer to, it was just auto pay, so I could just pay that.
One of the, if I may as well, one of the other options that we're looking at as well is, hopefully, we will be upgrading the city's website, and we'll be able to get it on there as well, where you can just go through the city's website and sign up, enter, enter some form of payment, and through that as well. So again, we're looking at all options to make this easier for our residents.
And while we've got you here, just to clarify, we've gone through three different fees that are on here. So we've got the EPCR fee, we've got the first responder fee, we've got one, one other fee in here. So if you've signed up for the subscription plan, all of those fees are covered, plus the, the transportation, is that correct? Or are the other fees, would they still be there?
There's gonna be some variables to that. For instance, if we transport you, you, and you're, and you are part of the paramedic subscription program, whatever the insurance, we will still do our third-party billing, and the insurance will pay what they pay, but all other private payment will be waived. Now, again, it, it depends on your, your provider, your insurance provider, and what they're gonna cover. We all have different policies and plans, so that's why I say there, there's some variables to that. However, we will not be going after anybody for additional private payment if you're signed up for this, nor do we anyways. But the insurance covers pretty much all of it.
So, so the, these EPCR fees and all those, they would be waived if they ended up being a, a fee afterwards, after transport, if they were part of the subscription plan?
Correct, so, so for example, if it's a four thousand dollar transport fee, including services, and your insurance company covered two thousand of it, you're part of the paramedic subscription program, you're not gonna be charged the two thousand dollars out of pocket. So hopefully, for your eighty-nine dollars for even a single person, you're, you're covered.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any further discussion? All right, well, then I will entertain a motion for this item.
I remove that we approve the fee schedule adjustments for the Sierra Madre Fire Department.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will move now from public hearing to, so I think the order, if I remember correctly, is ordinance fourteen eighty-seven, is that right? The, the city manager, or were we going to do the, the new item that I've, since it's not written in front of me, I, I missed it as we were doing there?
Right, yes, it's a discussion, the new item, and the new item being a dis, a dis, continuing a discussion of the proclamation of the local emergency in light of the impending rain.
All right, and you, we, we did that one first, right?
Right.
All right, and so, city manager Reno, so will you be giving the local emergency?
So, so Mayor, on, on January ninth, we had a special meeting to declare a fire emergency. And we are now concentrating our efforts on a debris and mud flow emergency. So we'd like to amend the, the decision that was made on January ninth to include mud flow and debris. Much of what we were gonna discuss in the presentation was covered by staff in, in public comment. However, senior management analyst Carlson is available to give an update again if needed. If not, we can, we can move to, to questions or.
And, and just one short update. The city council proclaimed the local emergency regarding the fire under government code section eight six three oh. That same code section requires the council to revisit their proclamation every sixty days at a minimum. And at some point, they have to end that local emergency. The city manager is requesting that we continue the proclamation of local emergency, and the benefit of doing so is it provides the city manager with the authority as emergency services director, which we're gonna talk about again on the agenda later on, to adopt executive orders as necessary. So if we continue this, a local emergency, and you make findings that the impending rain might lead to debris flows that can lead to an emergency in the city, then the city manager will have the authority to adopt any kinds of executive orders that are essentially just regulations that can be imposed at his direction without having to come to council to get approval first.
Examples would be parking restrictions or evacuation orders or those type of things.
These things may run counter to the ordinances on the books, but he can do so as emergency services director during the emergency period.
Got it. Is there anything else with the presentation for that item?
I, I don't believe so. I believe we covered everything during, during our, our public comment.
Then what I'd like to do is just move into, to council questions, so I imagine there's some questions? Anybody have any questions?
Are we initiating our emergency, EOC?
Our EOC is gonna open tomorrow at six AM at level two.
Level two.
And I guess, never mind, I'll ask the question when we get down to that other item about emergency director, or director of emergencies.
I had a question, so if we're, if we are including mud and debris flow, it doesn't reset the sixty-day clock, right? So sixty-day clock is still tied to, to January nine, to January ninth or January seventh?
It, it would, it would, it would extend it. I think what I'll do, because we agendize this on an emergency basis, that if this, if the city council decides to extend this local emergency and include in light of the impending rainstorm, then I'm gonna come before the city council at the next meeting and place this on consent with the added language, so you'll see a revised local emergency declaration, and you'll just adopt that one on consent with the language that you approved today.
So this would take us then through April eleventh. So that, that takes us a good portion through the end of the rainy season, because rainy season, city manager Reno, so is it April thirtieth? Is that typically the?
Typically, yes.
Yeah.
And the city council can always end the local emergency at any time?
Right, right, but we'd have to do it by, by, by the end of, of April.
Correct, okay.
So as, as I recall during that emergency meeting, we. So, as I, as I recall during that, uh, emergency meeting, we did, we did discuss, um, the, the whole event as being wind, fire, and we were preemptively thinking about debris flow. And I, I know I asked the question, does this proclamation, I think it was probably for FEMA purposes at the time, but does this proclamation encompass the debris flow as well? So, do we even need to change the language or...
I, I still think we're okay with it as written. This is kind of about the suspenders approach, because the, the resolution itself doesn't reference debris flow. Someone will have to go back, uh, transcribe the meeting and reference the specific portion where there's a discussion debris flow. I think it's probably a safer approach to include actual language regarding debris flow in the resolution itself that's gonna be adopted by council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does this change the incident overall to include not just the fire, but as well as the, if we, that, say we have some mud and debris flow or some type of action that we do have, or any, does, emergencies we do have related to the rain? Does that attach it as one incident then, because we're under the same emergency, local emergency order?
So, the answer is yes, for purposes of our local emergency, but that's not necessarily the case for purposes of FEMA reimbursement, for example. These are two separate concepts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, then I'd like to open this up for public comment. Do we have any comment cards on this item?
Not on this instrument.
I wouldn't imagine, since it was an emergency ad. Is there anyone from the audience? Seeing none, bring it back to the council for discussion. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Um, I believe this is an item that needs to be voted on, is that correct? All right. I will entertain a motion to, uh, so what should we, what is this one officially gonna be called? The extending the local emergency?
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be, if I could suggest the motion, it's, it's continuing... Uh, co- continuing the proclamation of a local emergency caused by the Eaton fire, including, uh, potential debris flows.
Okay.
And I think that reference should be sufficient, and I will come back to the city coun- if, if you approve it with that, I will come back to the city council at the next meeting, and I will have a revised resolution that the city council can, can vote on at that time.
I move that we continue the proclamation of local emergency, uh, caused by the Eaton fire and any subsequent potential debris flow.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, so now we'll move on to ordinance fourteen seventy-eight. Uh, city manager is director of emergency services, and, um, then we have...
Mayor, if I, if I may, I'd like to introduce, uh, deputy city attorney Julia Homochavaria to present.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so this ordinance would be designating the city manager as the director of emergency services, which previously the city of Sierra Madre had an emergency services and disaster commission, which was formerly codified in municipal code chapter two point three two, under which the city manager was designated as the director of emergency services. However, in two thousand and twenty, an ordinance was adopted to reduce the number of commissioners for active commissions and to remote, remove code references to inactive commissions. That ordinance dissolved the emergency services and disaster commission and inadvertently repealed the designation of the city manager as the director of emergency services. The government code requires that for a local emergency to be proclaimed, either the city council must meet at an emergency special or regular meeting to proclaim the emergency, or council may authorize a staff member to proclaim a local emergency and then must ratify that within seven days. The Eaton fire demonstrated why city council, uh, should designate the city manager as director of emergency services and reinstate his authority to proclaim a local emergency. This would allow for a more timely response to such an emergency, as it does not require city council to meet for a proclamation and thus mobilizes resource for aid and relief in the city's time of need. This ordinance does not undermine the authority of council, since the council will still need to ratify the proclamation, um, within seven days. And, um, this is common practice within many cities, including our neighboring cities of Pasadena, Arcadia, and San Marino, whose municipal codes all designate the city manager as director of emergency services. Lastly, this ordinance also makes, um, an administrative amendment to clarify that the city manager has the authority to appoint and remove the city clerk, now that the city clerk is no longer in elective office.
Great. Is that the end of your report?
Yeah, any questions?
Great. Questions?
I have one.
Please.
Uh, so in section three, um, so, uh, two dot zero eight dot one forty, um, subsection B, designation of alternate. Uh, it states that director of emergency services shall designate the order of succession to that office to take effect in the event the director is unavailable to attend meetings and otherwise perform his or her duties during an emergency. Such orders of succession shall be approved by the city council. So, I'm just trying to contemplate, how do we have that alternate designated already without coming to the council to then approve that? So, in case the city manager does become incapacitated during an emergency, do, I, I would, I would prefer to have that, um, order of se- of succession already in place, rather than have, having to come to the council and figure out who that is under an emergency meeting. Is that, is that, does the language contemplate that, or does that need to be changed, if, if that's a will of the council?
The intention would be that the alternate would be designated in advance, as you're, um, mentioning, but I would have to defer to the city attorney for whether the language would need to be amended.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. You, you can write that language in, if you'd like, and designate in this ordinance who that, who the successor to the city manager would be. You can, or you can strike this language and have the city manager determine for himself who his successor is going to be. Or you can leave it as is and adopt the resolution at some time in the future, so you don't have to mess with the ordinance. And you adopt a resolution identifying the chain of succession.
I'll wait till discussion to, to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions? So, I, I had a question. Um, so you said, and it, and it says in the report, that, um, it also makes the administrative amendment to clarify that the city manager has the authority to appoint and remove the city clerk. I don't see that in the, um, the strike through, oh, there it is, never mind. I now see it in item C, uh, there. So, it, it takes, so, so that's the change, is it, it takes out the city clerk at, in, in item C of, uh, two dot oh eight dot seventy. Okay.
Right, correct, that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, any other questions? All right, I'd like to open this up to public comment. City clerk, uh, did we receive any comment cards for, uh, public comment on this agenda item?
We have not, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Then I'll bring it back to council for discussion. Would you like to lead it off? You, you had, had a thought, Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, and I, I, so I think, I think with the city attorney, um, recommended, it's probably prudent, so we can get this, if we're gonna pass this thing, we can get it passed, because EOC is gonna be open tomorrow. My concern is, you know, if we put, the language has to be careful, because, you know, sometimes we might have a deputy city, city manager, sometimes we might not. Sometimes we might have an assistant city manager, sometimes we, we might not. So, maybe to Attorney Giragosian's recommendation, that, uh, that the city, the city manager appoints that individual might be the prudent way, but, um, I think we just need to be careful about organizationally, who we, who we designate as the successor, if we're gonna be the one designated successor as per item B here.
I, I would tend to agree with you, that, when, as you were talking about that, as you, as you teased it up, that was where my mind was going. Was rather than having that, that, a detailed succession plan, or even a, you know, even one, uh, position, things change. I, I would, we, we have, um, we, our city manager's demonstrated that, that, um, he is very capable of, of making the decisions, empowering people within it. Uh, we've seen that with at least the, the last city manager as well. I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that the city manager that, that, that we have, or the council has in the future, has that same, uh, set of, of skills and abilities. So, I, I, I think, yeah, empowering the team is, is, uh, the way I would lean on this.
I agree, since our job is to basically assure that we have a city manager that is, um, effective at what our people want and what our needs, and obviously our city managers display this, and he knows his team best, whereas we don't, since we're not in charge of his staff.
Yeah.
So, I agree that leaving it to him is, is under his purview.
Sure.
Same with you.
It shouldn't be, actually should not be necessarily our position, cause we're, we're not in charge of staff, we're not interacting.
Agreed. So, do we need to make a change to the resolution at all?
Yes, as mayor, mayor, so this language, a- and, uh, the deputy city attorney can correct me. I believe this language was in the original version that was struck, correct? So, so this is a, this is a carryover from the prior language, so we re-included it. And if the city council wants to, uh, authorize the city manager to choose his own successor, then I think you just strike the last sentence of, uh, s- of paragraph B of section two point oh eight point one four oh.
And I'd, I'd like to have a, a greater understanding of the alternate. You know, let's, let's say, city manager is with the fire chief at incident command, and something happens in the city that needs to be decided upon immediately. Does that, does that individual have the power at that point in time, or is it, does the city manager have to be incapacitated or out of town or something else for that to occur?
So, I, I can give you a, a couple of examples. One of the, one of the benefits that we have in Sierra Madre, and I can't speak for any other city, but we do run tabletop exercises, and we have scenarios, um, and we do have backups. And so, uh, in my case, um, assistant city manager Hernandez would step in, um, and then we look at the type of emergency. Um, if it's a fire-related emergency and, and the fire chief is available, he may be the most appropriate person to step in. If it's a police emergency, um, then, uh, Police Chief Barrientos may be the most appropriate person to step in. But I think it's through that process of understanding the emergencies, um, and having, uh, those tabletop exercises to, to have the backfield for, uh, when and if I need to step out. Um, there are occasions where I need to step out to, uh, deal with, uh, our legislative body, and, and I have to leave somebody in command. Typically, assistant city manager, um, Hernandez will step in. If it's a twenty-four-hour emergency where we trade off, and he serves at one time and I serve at a different time, those are some of the situations, um, and examples.
Yeah, cause to me, like, item five represents the city in all dealings with public or private agencies or matters pertaining to emergencies. Like, if you are not available, and it's, it's imminent that something needs to be decided upon right then, I, I feel comfortable for our citizens that somebody's there that can make that decision, that doesn't have to be somebody that we're designating. Okay. Good.
So, um, if we were then to strike that last sentence, uh, of, uh, what is it, item... B, thank you. Yes, of item B, uh, uh...
Section three.
Section three, uh, one forty. So, so we can do that now and adopt the ordinance, is that correct?
Uh, correct, you can.
Would we need to add? At the city manager's discretion, or some kind of...
The director of emergency services, that shall designate the order of succession to that office to take effect in the event the director is unavailable to attend meetings and otherwise perform his or her duties during an emergency. And then we strike, such orders of succession shall be approved by the city council.
All right. Are we ready for a motion on this item?
I move to approve ordinance fourteen seventy-eight as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. So, now, um, this takes us to our, um, next discussion item, sign placement in public parkways, uh, parkways, and I believe that we have assistant planner, uh, Huang, to come and, uh, present that, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Parkers. Um, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight we have for discussion, sign placement in public parkways. Currently, in our municipal code and title ten, a parkway is defined to mean that portion of a street other than a traveled roadway. This is also commonly known as the portion between a sidewalk and the public right-of-way, often with the form of landscaping. The code currently does not contain a specific rule regarding sign placements in parkways. However, it does prohibit all signs on public property or right-of-way, except for garage and yard sale signs. Since a public, or since a parkway is public property, staff interprets the prohibition to apply to signs placed in parkways as well. Previously, in the last December, December meeting, Mayor Protem Lowe directed staff to include the discussion of signs in a parkway. It is recognized that the restrictions of signs, um, sign placement in parkways may create challenges during election seasons, when individuals seek to display signs to support candidates or ba- ballot measures, or even signs to support local sport leagues or clubs. However, the relevant provisions of the city's sign ordinance have not been amended since two thousand and three. And staff recommends the city council to discuss and provide direction with the consideration that an amendment would either, one, prohibit the placement of signs on public property without a content-based exception, or two, permit signs in parkways subject to content-neutral regulations such as size, color, location, um, duration, and et cetera. And factors to consider when drafting an amendment would include enhanced community engagement, some enforcement challenges that may include sign placements in pedestrian pathways, um, utility or hydrant access, traffic visibility and unauthorized signage, and lastly, a balanced approach to public safety. This may include the proposed amendments that include clear guidelines for the number, um, for the number, location, and duration of signs, um, to ensure public safety and minimize potential hazards. And to also note that the allowance of signs in a public, public right-of-way may introduce an added risk and liability for the city's risk management. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Questions?
I appreciate the introduction from Public around, um, ordinance twelve twenty, uh, twelve point twenty point zero seven zero, duty of abuting landowners to cultivate trees and public property, which I, I would, would like in the report, because that was the validation for, for why I brought this forward. And I know you, as you guys have a printout, by the way, of this ordinance, um, because the validation was that if it is, it's public land, but property owners, I'm sorry, residents are given the duty to maintain the grass, the trees, weeds, vines, debris, and the water for it, supplies, the gardening for it and all such, we are, we're, we're designated to maintain that. My question is, one, you know, how, why, I guess, why was that ever designated? Is that normal for all cities? Is it just us? My second question would be, what about homes that don't have a sidewalk? How do we know what is property of public land versus, like, how do we know they're, they're, they're offset? Like, where is the public land versus the personal residence property line?
Before you answer, I just, I, I have a process question. So, our, our agenda item is on sign placement in public parkways, and I understand the overlap of this. Is there anything, like, is this, is, because it's a discussion item and we're coming it back, are we okay with noticing on all of this? Is that, do, do we need to, do we need to agendize this separately, or, or can, is this something we can, i- is this a, a rabbit trail we can go down?
Yeah, I, I, I think for discussion purposes, it's, it's fine, because there's no ordinance before the city council for consideration. If the city council directs us to, we can consider an ordinance amendment for the, for that cited ordinance section as well.
Got it. Okay. Then I apologize, that rabbit trail is, is, is not the right way to, is this a, another, another facet of this? Please go ahead and, uh, answer...
So, I guess question number one would be, is it normal to require residents to maintain the, are we calling it, I think I've heard two definitions? Are we calling it the, um...
Parkway.
Parkway, or the, there was another term used earlier?
Right-of-way?
Right-of-way. Is there a difference between a right-of-way and a, I guess there's three questions there. Is there a difference between a right-of-way and a, I guess there's three questions there? Is there a difference between a side, uh, the two different terms?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem for the question. Um, so, a parkway is considered part of the public right-of-way? If, um, that answers your question there.
Then what's a right-of-way?
Um, if, so, right-of-way would be considered public property, um, and if Public Works has a definition for that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Lo.
Thank you.
Um, I get this question a lot, what's a parkway, um, especially if there's not a sidewalk. Um, the right-of-way is everything, everything between the private property lines. It could include a sidewalk, could include a vegetated parkway, includes a street and then going over, you got your curb again, maybe another sidewalk, maybe not. Right-of-way is everything in between the private property lines. It's very common to call from the private property line to the curb, a parkway.
Okay, that's definitely-
Whether it has a sidewalk or not.
Yeah.
And then the only way for somebody to know how-
Far it is.
What the size of their parkway is, is to call the Public Works Department, we have a map and we have it all, um, we have to look it up for them. It's, it's a wide variety.
So, I guess the problem, I guess I'm asking is, do we, do we have, why do we have the requirement of residents, is that normal to have residents having to maintain the right-of-way or the-
Parkway.
Parkway?
This, this section of the code was included with an update to the Tree Preservation and Protection, uh, part of the municipal code in two thousand and fourteen. Um, I actually was around at that time, so I think the, the impetus and the purpose was to have adjacent property owners take care of their trees, a little bit more than maybe some of the other details that are outlined in this section. That's my best correct, uh, recollection as to, you know, why this was inserted, it was part of a tree ordinance.
Can I, can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
I would, I remember that discussion.
Mm-hmm.
And part of the discussion was that private property owners planted the trees in the parkway, and they, they, they can, and then so there was a debate about, well, who's, can you even trim a tree if I planted it in the parkway?
Yeah.
Then, you know, then there was, that's, I remember what, that's what we're talking about.
That, that still exists to a bit.
Yeah, we really didn't resolve it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we think we, you know, we have an inventory with our, with our contractor on trees at the city, plants, and then trees that are there that nobody knows who planted.
Right.
So, I, I agree, I think that was a component of the discussion in two thousand and fourteen.
So, I, I see there's two lines of questioning here and I, I, what I'd like to propose for us is, is since we've started down the line of, of trees, let's start with trees, ask questions about that and then, then I'd like to pause and then, and then do signs, because I think there's some different questions on, on each.
Not just trees, but maintenance of, like, you've got no tree.
Okay, ma- ma- maintenance, ma- maintenance of, of, of the parkway and then signs on it.
Right, yeah, I, I think-
No, because that's the whole validation of why I introduced this.
But I, but I, I do think, I do think, yeah, I do think maintaining trees is not within, uh, the, the description we have in the agenda. It is, it is parkways, I think, I think discussion of parkways is okay, but as soon as we get into tree maintenance and-
Can we just say parkway maintenance then? Because that's what I was asking.
Right.
Because, because, because my question will, are, are going to go straight down to trees.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should stay away from tree maintenance because it's just not part of the, yeah, agenda description.
So, when I, when I agendized this, it was specifically because I said, if you are requiring a property owner or the resident to maintain the si- the side, the other side of the sidewalk or whatever the property line is for the right-of-way, then I should be able to put what sign I want to on there, I mean, within, within whatever code we designed. So, that's why I brought up the discussion item, but that code isn't in the report, so that's why I said I, I asked for it before this, and I'm hoping and I'm glad we have it, but the public doesn't have it, so-
You can still argue for it, it doesn't have to be in the report, you can argue for it.
So, that was-
Because I agree with you.
Yeah.
So, so let's try to stay with, 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 with questions, there, there's a, there's a clear need for, for, for discussion here, and so-
Yeah.
So, are there other questions on the, the, on the maintenance of public parkways? I think it's the way I'm trying to-
So, should I ask that again? Do most cities do this, are we the only one?
I do believe most cities do have the property owner maintain their, um, parkway area in front of their home that they are adjacent to.
Okay. Other questions?
Yeah, so regarding sign placement, um, there, there was a, and I know this is a kind of a one-off, but there was a business owner who also was leased, had the enhanced sidewalk program, so therefore leasing some of the property of the city, and they wanted to place a sign in the bow out that's adjacent to the area they're leasing. Um, would that then be something under their control or is that still a public right-of-way because it was a public property that's being subleased by a business? And I know it's very one-off, but the, the, the business owner asked me about that.
Yeah, it's actually a really good question, uh, and we haven't been confronted with that as far as I know, but when we do, uh, do one of those bow out leases for one of the, I think four businesses, we ask for a site plan. At that point, that's when we can look and see maybe if there's a sign proposed. Um, part of what we're looking for in the site plan is ADA.
And this was a temporary sign, not a permanent sign, so this would be a political sign, let's say.
Um, I, I, again, we haven't been asked that, we would look for ADA first of all, and then actually the, uh, Planning and Community Preservation Department does have some parameters on what the sign's content can be.
Hmm.
Um, but, um, if it wasn't a leased space, it's as simple as an encroachment permit as long as ADA and everything else is fine. If it's a leased space, that's a new question for me.
Uh, so that would include like the signs that stores put up, like, come inside, we have a special today.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Yes, please.
So, um, okay, so, but getting back to this issue that's in the agenda, um, do, are we aware of any documented instance where somebody, uh, got into some kind of an ax- car accident or perhaps tripped on the sidewalk, uh, which was precipitated by the existence of a political sign in a parkway? Has it been a documented public safety hazard?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Would this also, and I had asked this in my questions, would this also have to include the signage in the park that we put up to, to help build community with the walking, like the library signs then, would those not be actually allowed?
I know Caitlin was discussing this with me and I don't know where it ended up, so I'll let Caitlin take that one.
And our, and also we, we designed it for the new park, the Meadows?
Thank you for the question. So, the code currently prohibits signs that are in the public right-of-way or public property?
It, so, that is, so, so technically the library signs in the, in Memorial Park are not allowed according to our ordinance?
O- only, only if those signs were placed by private individuals, government, so if the government places signs on its own property, that's totally fine, that's government speech on its own property.
Okay.
As long as, okay, yeah. Doesn't violate any other things, like political signs, they wouldn't be able to do, because that violates their other-
Wait, 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 you, you're, so, backup. So, that's government speech on government property? Okay. I thought we had freedom of speech for everybody on government property, d- doesn't anyone have a right to make a public statement on public property?
Not statement signage.
You, you can, yeah, you can-
That's what, that's what a sign is, it's an expression of free speech, free political speech.
The, the, the city can prohibit signage on, let's say, a park for reasons that are, they just have to have a rational basis for it. So, for example, if a park is supposed to be used for recreation, you don't want to have signs in that green space because people can't recreate. So, so long as you can tie it to some rational basis, then you can justify that prohibition.
Well, I, I, I get that, so you're saying that we're treating a sign put right in the middle of Memorial Park the same as a sign in a parkway, where the sign in the parkway presumably hasn't got a real, it's not really impeding where the sign in the Memorial Park is obviously a problem, right? So, we're treating these as if they're the same.
Right, yeah, and, and I'll add, the, the sign in the parkway is more problematic for a reason that was addressed in the staff report, which is, it's creating a content-based difference between what can be placed and what can't be placed. So, we have currently in the ordinance, it says you can place yard signs, but you can't place political signs. Uh, this ordinance was adopted in two thousand and three, the law has evolved since then. Um, when this has come up, we've told staff, uh, not to enforce this strictly because, uh, it's, it's probably legally suspect, uh, given the evolution in the law. You can't have content-based restrictions on speech.
You could have it, y- but you could have, uh, restrictions based on other things like size or on-
Right, non-content-based.
Non-content-based.
That apply across the board.
Got it.
And, and so we also don't, that would, we haven't included things like Little League and thank you to our firefighters, like, that's not in our language to be able to include those in public space either, correct?
Right, and I just want to be clear, you're talking about private individuals placing these things, yes.
So, like, the little advertisements to sign up for AYSO at the park are actually not supposed to be there?
Yeah, and, and just to draw another distinction again to, to Councilor Goss's point, when, when the city places its signs on its own property, it's acting as a private property owner. The city is a private property owner and it can exercise the same rights that private property owners have to place to do whatever it wants with its private property, including the placing of signs and prohibiting others from placing signs on that public property, unless that property is a designated public forum, then there's a different issue and the first amendment law is a little complex on this point, I can get into that if you'd like.
So, when there isn't an actual sidewalk and parkway, what is then the parkway, uh, you know, like a, a house that doesn't have a, um, sidewalk, what's the, where is the parkway then?
It is a, it is, it's a predetermined, um, foot or, or, or half a foot from the face
of the curb in towards the private property, and there's an invisible line.
How, how, how long, did you say half a foot?
No, it's different everywhere, it could, it's, it's broken down to, um, a, a, a full foot or a half a foot, it's not broken down by an inch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, so it could be five and a half feet in from the face of the curb, it could be eight feet in from the face of the curb, and it really is an invisible line.
So, it, it, it's based, it's based on the title of the property then?
Yes.
Okay, and so when, when, when the parcels were created in that area, it's based on, on, on how that, that, that part of land was parceled out?
Yes, track maps and then, um, you can, you can get a survey to get it down to the quarter of an inch or whatever you need, um, but we do have the maps to tell you how many feet or feet point five it is.
Got it. So, conceivably, we could have built a road almost all the way to the property line and then there's no quote-unquote parkway or public ri- or extra public right-of-way beyond the curb.
There's really no parkways in the canyon areas, for example.
So, you can never put a sidewalk there?
Right.
Hmm.
Interesting.
Interesting. Thank you.
So, so, so wait, hold on, that, that, so that's a real, that's a really good question. So, then, then, um, for signs in the canyon, how does, how, how does our current ordinance deal with signs in the canyon? So, if you want to put a sign in the canyon and you don't have a, a parkway, what ordinance, how does the ordinance apply in that case? It, because then, then it's on the building, right, or it, it's-
On private property.
It's on private, it's, that's on private property. Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I don't think so.
Are, are we contemplating, I know it's in the staff report, um, one of the things we could talk about is the number of signs, um, are, have we done a survey, I think to Mayor Pro Tem Lo's point of how many sign, you know, looking at other cities, how many signs they permit when they do permit, um, or do, do cities even permit signs in parkways, um, around us?
Director Lynn?
If you know.
So, um, thank you for the question. Um, we did a survey of surrounding cities, none of the cities, um, allow signs in public right-of-way or parkway. Um, the only city that, um, allows signs in the parkway would be La Canada in San Gabriel Valley.
And, and what's their policy then?
So, their policy is to, they're, they're limited to two signs, and there is a size restriction for political signs.
So, so, n- no other city in kind of our, our cohort group or within our area has an ordinance around signs, or do they have, or do they have an, an ordinance that bans signs?
Um, their ordinance prohibits signs in parkway.
Okay, so there, there actually is, you, you're not allowed to put them on, so, so in Arcadia, you couldn't have any Little League or firefighter or political sign in the parkway?
That's correct, similar to Sierra Madre Co. as well, our current Co. prohibit all this, all signs in parkway. Except for yard signs and- Except for yard signs and garage sales.
Got it.
But they do. We've driven through Arcadia during, during November.
They do, and so do we.
Yeah, that's right, right.
All right, further questions? All right, then I would like to, to move and open this up for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any, uh, peo- any cards for public comment?
We have one submitted, Mr. Mayor, from Glenn Lemden.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilon staff. Um, my suggestion, unless we want to look like the clutter that is in some of the surrounding communities a little south of here, prohibit all signs on city property, real simple, we don't have to worry about whether it's a parkway, uh, right-of-way, a park, um, so just prohibit it. If somebody wants to put a sign, put it on your own property. Um, but I think there's a larger issue here that, that I want to address. This, I believe, was, was brought, and thank you, Chris, for bringing, bringing this to council. This was brought because during the November elections, I noticed that there was signs in city park, bow outs, Kirsten Court, and then the parkways. Um, and I was curious why the codes weren't being enforced, so I contacted the code enforcement officer, he told me that he was directed by his bosses not to enforce it. I also noticed that four of our five council members were in violation of the law, willingly in violation of the law. This was concerning for me. So, I took the issue up again with the senior manager and, and I was told that for the reasons, Chris, that you had said, um, if homeowners are going to be mandated to maintain it, then it's only fair that we ignore the codes that previous councils adopted through legislative action and allow them to put the signs there. This to me is extremely, um, concerning because we have to maintain the, the authority that we give to elected people. Um, what you're doing now is the right way to do it, if you don't like the law, you change it, but you don't ignore it and staff should never direct personnel to ignore it also. Um, imagine if you guys tonight or in future, you decide to change the regulations and future councils undermine the authority that you have, it's not right. And so, again, my suggestion just, just, um, prohibit all of it, but even more importantly, we cannot lose sight, undermine the legislative process that we've adopted, we can't do it, we can't even start a trickle till we wrote it, because that's basically what our system is all about, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jo Hampton. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Discussion?
So, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to solve this, I, I think-
No, tonight's idea is, is, is guidance, so-
But, but, you know, I think this needs to come back with, you know, a kind of a holistic look at the, the parkway area, um, as what I think was originally intended by, by Mayor Pro Tem, uh, to, to include talking about trees and all those types of things and what the, what the duty of the homeowner or resident is and what the duty of the city is, and part of that will be, I think, the sign issue. But it doesn't mean we can't not, we shouldn't talk about, discuss this, but, uh, I think that's kind of a bigger, bigger picture.
I, I, I would tend to agree, I'd like to have the holistic thing, I, I, I want, I, I'm- I, I, I would tend to agree. I'd like to have the holistic thing. I, I, I want, I'm, I'm biting my tongue to go down the tree route because I've got thoughts there, but it is not part of this item, but I, I think that, that when it comes back, I'd like that to be part of, of it as well.
And that could include, what would we agendaize it at the end? How about that? When you guys want to talk about that, you guys can agendaize it at the end.
If we give, if we give guidance now, if we give guidance now, it can come back.
I'll tell you why later. I'll agendaize it at the end and I'll tell you why, because otherwise I'm bringing up a whole nother agendaized item right now. So.
So we're not going to decide on sign?
No, 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 I'm talking about the trees. So just eliminate any discussion of trees and things like that. My, my premise again for this wasn't just political signs, it was for Little League signs, it's for those amazing, my kid is an honor roll student. It's for thank you CRM Fire Department, First Rescuers and PD and everything like that, those signs. And I am paying to the city, money in my water bill, to maintain that area. I'm paying my gardener to trim the grass, and I'm not a very landscaping person, so I don't do this, but many people do landscape that area and they maintain it, and we're charged to do that according to our code. But I can't put down what I want to as a sign, at all, unless it's yard sale or garage sale. And I find that erroneous. I don't like the idea that you're making me required to take care of this, but I can't use it as I, as I would want, within reason. I mean, obviously, I don't want to do some crazy, crazy, scary decoration of something, but I think we should put in writing and make a code that leaves it to, like La Canyada where it's not overdone, two signs. I agree with that type of, of signage, as long as it doesn't hinder public utilities, safety. There was already signage language about glowing and things like that, and there's parameters in, in what it can look like.
Comment on that?
Yeah, please.
I completely agree with you, or a change that makes, and I think Mr. Lambden's point is certainly important, that these have been obviously flagrant examples of us kind of looking the other way when the code says something. Well, there's a reason for that, it's called custom. And I think the custom in this city is going up against the rule, and I think we need to change the rule to reflect the custom. I, I, I teach political science and I, above everything else, believe in free speech and I believe in, we can't get enough political speech. And I feel like if you look at how parkways are laid out and you put a sign perpendicular to the street on a parkway, there's a far higher probability someone will see it. And that's the whole point of political speech, for somebody to see it, process it. When you put a sign up on somebody, yard sign facing the street, it's much harder to see. In some neighborhoods, it's almost impossible to see because of trees and overhang. So it seems to me we ought to side on the, on the, on the side of more political speech, not less. I do believe it's an issue, having done this, I do believe it's an issue that when you get close to intersections, you could very well impede the vision, so I would say maybe, and I'd have to leave this to the experts, I'd say at least a hundred, hundred fifty feet from any intersection, I don't think I'd put a sign in a parkway. But, because you, you know, because if you're turning left and there's a sign or you can't see, maybe not see the lane of traffic. But I did ask, and there is no documented instance, where a political sign impeded or caused an accident or caused any injury, so it seems to me that we're, we're, we'd be safe if we did this.
One quick thing to add that too, in equities. Why would I, if I have a sidewalk, not be able to do this, but if I don't have a sidewalk, I don't know where the property line is, so I'm gonna, I can do this. So it, it's, it's not equitable for those who have sidewalks and not, because people who don't have sidewalks, you don't know where the property line is. And I don't think the code enforcer most likely will go out and look at the whole parcel map. That'd be a waste of time.
The code enforcer? Let's get this straight. We have all kinds of rules on the books the code enforcer doesn't look at because he doesn't know they're there or doesn't have the time to do. So let's just add these to the list. I mean, think about all the additions that are being done and, and, and things that are being done in people's homes this week that are not being run through the code enforcement, not run through our planning department. So I mean, it seems like we've got to kind of pick and choose where our priorities here, if we're looking for code enforcing.
Other agendaized items.
You know, items. Yeah, I know, but I mean, it goes to this issue. Is this such a high priority that, you know, we want?
So, so I, I, I like where you're go, where you went with this, Councilmember Goss, is that, you know, it, it is norms and, and culture and it is, you know, traditions or history or practice. And, and I mean, that's one of the things that's great about the cities, is that you go anywhere and there's all kinds of signs. And, and I would agree with you on, on the, any type of, of speech, that we should be allow it, we should be encouraging it. We should be encouraging people to speak out and to have, you know, to, to have that dialogue. So I think that that makes a lot of sense. I, I also think, you know, that, that's why I was asking the, the question about where the parkway starts, is that, you know, trying to decide where your property line is gets, gets really difficult. I mean, we're actually having, we've had some, some issues with residents most recently with, with that, so I, I, I think having some guidance on the placement, the number, probably revisiting the, the, the details on the signs, you know, like Councilman, like Mayor Protem said, is on, you powered or flashing or colors or anything like that, that, that would be distractions, I think that, that's important. But I, I, I do think, you know, having signs out is something that, that's part of the city and should be supported and encouraged within reason, within, within some sort of scope.
Can I also ask that this part of the discussion be reflected in the minutes? Because I think it's really important to look at the future when we are bringing this forward, that people can read through our minutes and see what, why we've made these choices, what our perspectives were, what was the public comment? Because help guide, because in the future, when I bring up, like what was, when you said this came up, what, two thousand and three was the first one? And now, it's interesting to see, like, how was that process changed? Why did they change it?
Would it, so, would it be in the minutes or in the staff report? Because I think the staff report would then have what the, the actual, it, it would reflect the dialogue that was received.
So the reason I asked that is when I looked at the Planning Commission's Alverno issues as well as other issues, those minutes told me exactly what the discussion was with the people sitting here, so I could understand why that code was amended. Why was that code set and approved, because of the discussion items, like, right now?
What was the rationale for the policy?
Correct, correct. And I think it was really important and really helped us as council, when I read through those reports from Planning Commission. So I think it's really important that we do that. Otherwise, people have to go to archived videos and watch a whole video. I just think it's really important, and I've seen, you know, other councils do that, where it's, when it's this kind of thing, like give a blurb of why, what we're discussing. Why did we make this policy?
So I, I completely agree with, with, with the, the intent that you've got. Where I, where I'm wondering is, is that we're going to have a staff report on that, and, and that's where it's going to have the decision on it. So would it be easier to find the results on it if you had the, the discussion and then the outcome in the staff report?
No, I want to know why I trust those leaders, when I'm not here anymore.
But it's in the staff report, that, that was part of it.
I want to go back to those minutes and see what our previous council were thinking. Just like I want to know what the Planning Commission was thinking, when they come up with codes and policies.
You're just asking for expanded minutes on this.
I'm just asking, expanding minutes, like, when it comes to our discussion items, like, this is, and then they normally are. I just want to make sure that it's noted what our public comment was, what we're discussing, so that we can understand, why did we change this? What was our rationale?
Okay.
I think it also makes it very transparent, that we're not hiding anything, this is our transparency time.
Okay.
And we even have technology that does that now, for us.
Other discussion? Peter Wynn, do you have enough guidance on this, or City Manager Reynoso, do you have enough guidance to take this back?
I, I, I want to clarify.
I have questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so on the issue of content neutrality, is the council okay with dropping any reference that differentiates signs based on content?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And if I'm understanding correctly, the council wants to permit signs in the public right-of-way, but place restriction, objective, non-content, content-neutral restrictions on them?
Right.
Quick question then about that.
Well, for public safety purposes, primarily.
Is there state or LA County restrictions on signage at all, even if it's on the person's property or not? And the example I'm stating is there was a resident in, I believe, North Hollywood, that had a race, racial symbol in their window, and the city was able to mandate they remove that. And I don't remember why, because to me it would be free speech, even if I don't like it. And I want to know if there's already language in there that prohibits certain signage due to hateful or anything speech.
I, I mean, only, only speech that's not protected by the First Amendment would be something we could move against. And we would have to get an injunction to do that, it's not something we could do through code enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, and, but as far as like LA County, I don't know, because LA County would have, LA County's ordinances and regulations have no bearing on the city of Sierra Madre.
Okay.
This made me think of another one. Do we need to put any provisions in for real estate signs, or is that covered in a separate thing? So is that?
So, so business regulation is an entirely separate topic.
I would be concerned, but yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Vulgarities, those are already.
Those are fine. I mean, they're permissible under the First Amendment.
Wasn't there a code of decency though, that like, I can't stand in front of my house naked?
Even though it might be my First Amendment right.
Correct, that's a, there's a separate body of law on, on public nudity.
You know, if we pass an ordinance like this and, and kind of liberalize this, I, I don't think we're, we're going to see a whole mass amount of signs, controversial signs spring up about all kinds. I, I feel like that, that's why we live here. Most of our, our fellow CRMs are self-disciplined about these kind of public matters. We don't have that problem. I, I mean, we can go to other cities, you can see really horrible examples of it, but here, we've been generally pretty good about this. I wouldn't expect changing the actual language to allow for things in the parkway is going to cause, you know, FU signs in the parkways, CRM or something like that.
Yeah, I, it's, you, your, your options are really to allow it or disallow it, because when you try to regulate along the margins, you run into very challenging lawsuits to defend.
So I mean, what we're trying to do is, i- is codified what the actual practice is. City Manager Reynoso, you wanted some clarifications, did you get what you needed?
I, I, I took some notes, and so today was to provide staff with, with direction, so we could come back. But what I'm, what I have is, who maintains the parkways and why? The homeowner's right to use a parkway. And I think City Attorney just clarified, it doesn't matter what type of sign it is. So, so Little League, political signs, we're just going to look at signs in general. We're going to look at if there's any state or county restrictions and if they apply to the city. We did, the initial conversation was around elections, so I'm going to include time restrictions or, or election periods, or if we want to just open it up all year, because Little League and, and first responders, thank you, those happen, could happen at any time, is that okay?
Yes, you mean, you mean keeping the code that we already have, that political signage can only be up ten days after, no?
It can't, it can't be based on the content of the sign, so it's going to be, it's going, it might be something like signs can only be there for thirty days. All signs, after thirty days, you'd have to remove a sign. That, that would be like a durational limit, a, a, a content-neutral durational limit on signage.
Like the parking, three-day parking.
So, so then how do you, when, when you run for office, you have to have a, a bond or a sign bond or something?
A deposit.
Sign, yeah, there was another.
It's a bond.
It's a sign bond. So, how does that reflect this, this dialogue, is it, can you?
Mayor is correct, and when a candidate's running for office, for an elected office, the candidates do pay a one hundred dollar refundable bond, and then if the signs are removed, according to the municipal code, if they're removed within ten days after the election, then the bond is refundable.
And, and the bond is to pay the cost of us having to, the city having to remove it, correct?
If they are not removed within ten days and city staff needs to remove them, then that bond is used for city staff to remove the, the signs.
And, and so if, if some kind of durational limit was placed on signs through this ordinance, we'd probably have to revisit that bonding requirement.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm contemplating, if you have a presidential sign, if you have a state senate sign, I mean, there's no, they don't have to pay a bond, and their signs were all over the place as well, right? Do they get stuck with a, a bill to clean up the city? No?
No, no.
If you have a presidential sign on your private property, you can have it.
On your private property, we're talking about the parkway.
But not according to the bond, because prior, those signs could be on any public area. So it's inferred that it's on your private residence. So technically, if you had a political president sign up, you were supposed to remove it, you were supposed to get a bond, and then remove it within ten days.
Private property. Is that what the ordinance, so, so the, the bond, is it, is it based on an ordinance?
I, I think, again, we might be getting off topic, because we're, we're, we were trying to focus on a sign placement in the parkways.
Yeah.
And I think placement in the, in private property might be out of the scope.
Did I, did I miss anything in my?
The only, the issue I might have is, is if signs placed too close to intersections in parkways, I think.
Maintain safety.
Yeah, from a safe traffic point of view, that, that may be.
There is the new law on parking related to, to implied crosswalks, I can't remember the exact language.
That's not like we can't park.
Yeah, but, 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 but there, there's guidance, that's, that's exactly where I was thinking. It's a guideline for pedestrians, it, it may be, at least something to consider. I, I don't want to bind staff on it, but there, someone had done some thinking on that and, and it'd be worth looking at that as, as guidance.
Sign safety distance from intersections.
Is that?
And size, size, right, that's non-content.
The size is in there, I think, too.
I think the standard.
Yeah.
Height, yeah, I think that, I think our current.
Size is in there, but.
Size is in there.
Size is in there.
But we can revisit it, right?
Yeah.
I wouldn't mess with color or anything like that.
I think it says, something that deters driving, like, I think it says, light, light up, so it can't be like
Right, right.
neon, it can't light up, flash.
Reflective.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff.
All right, then I think we're on to the next item, which is Resolution twenty-five oh six, legislative advocacy? Is that right?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'll be presenting this one. The City Council last considered this item at their January twenty-eighth regular meeting. At that meeting, the City Council provided some direction, here is the direction I had recorded, to prioritize requests from neighboring or regional public agencies, to expand the scope of the resolution to include funding applications and other opportunities to increase resources, and for the city manager to consult with the mayor prior to taking any policy position. So this, the version of the resolution in your packet today looks a little different than the prior version, because it doesn't seek to define the policy priorities. That's been taken out. Instead, what it's doing is it's creating three elements that need to be satisfied in order for the city manager to take a policy position. Those three elements are the following. The position. The position is at the request of a neighboring public agency or a member organization of which the city is a member. The position supports an increase in or opposes a decrease in resources to the city, a neighboring public agency or a member organization of which the city is a member, and the mayor approves the policy position. So you can see this one is more focused on resources and is, stays away from, really, policy considerations. It's more focused on, I guess, policies that advance resources, less on policies that determine legislative decisions not related to resources.
And remind me, the, the reason for that is, if, if we were going to talk about a legislative policy, it's not as timely, was that, that was our rationale, right?
It's.
And because we, some things are timely for our neighbors to get support for maybe a grant, that's, that was our concern.
Right, so there, there were, the, the rationale behind this policy resolution was that we kept receiving, we, I mean, city management kept receiving requests to take positions on legislation, on regulations, on applications for resources and other items. And the city, and the city management was unable to respond to those requests in time, because we couldn't agendaize. because we couldn't agendize it uh for the for, by agenda, by agendizing that for the next regular city council meeting, we lost the opportunity to weigh in. And so initially, the idea was that the city manager was going to uh be authorized to pursue policy positions on a whole host of things, including resources and non-resource related issues. And this one is gonna be related specifically to resources for the city or neighboring public agency or member organization. So it's a lot narrower in in scope.
And that's your presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
I went first last time.
I have comments, but no questions.
I guess I have more comments more than questions.
Hearing no questions. Madam Clerk, do you have any comment cards or question cards for this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there is one from Glenn Lambden.
Welcome back, Mr. Lambden.
Let me beat this dead horse. One one of the benefits of of our representative government is that we, the people, we get to pick from us five council members to go into the bureaucracy that is government and create legislation. You create policy and you represented us through the legislative authority that we give you through fair and open elections. This proposal, in a way, kind of violates that in that it would eliminate the public to be involved in these policy decisions. And it would only require just the mayor, not two other council members to be in agreement. Now, let me, let me say, I I believe every of our five council members are extremely trustworthy and capable and qualified to make the decisions. But that's not a reason to sidestep the legislative process that we put you, we trust you to go into government and make these decisions on our behalf. It's, a- again, this is just one more little thing that erodes the very foundation of this representative government. So I would say no. If if this is just a matter of convenience and we might not make a time issue, then you know what? Call a special meeting. We can do that, but it takes three elected council members to make something happen in the city. And and I'd hate to see us start stepping away from that again. Okay, thank you.
Have I asked a question, Mr. Lambden? And thank you, thank you for that. Um, did you, did you watch the meeting when we discussed this?
I did not. No, no.
Um, so if you do watch that, you you will see that your concerns were were raised by the council, and that's why it's coming back to us.
And and I did speak with one council member on this, and and I was made aware of that. I I, you know, it's just important, the process is so important, and we can't ever sidestep it in 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 all applications of government and policy creation and and adhering to policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other other comment?
No, sir.
All right, we'll bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, so the the title of the resolution didn't really change, so I I don't think it meets the spirit of what we were kind of contemplating originally. Um, and it kind of goes back to Mr. Lambden's comments. We, as a current council, um, we're, we typically, and it's just because of our current council and probably the two before, we avoid any large political issues that aren't to a direct benefit of our residents and our city. That's just kind of been a, just a quiet policy that we've we've kind of fell into because all all we're focused on is this city and the benefit of this city. So I I don't know that that the title is really referencing, and that was our consensus when we talked about this um the first time. So I don't think, I don't know that we need to change the title, but the title is a little misleading. Our, from what I recall, and I asked the question, the reason we wanted to do this was because we have regional partners that are sometimes asking for funding and would like to have a letter to go along with it for their benefit. And we can't call a special meeting to do that generally. And if there's an issue that that is of regional, state, or federal legislation, regulation, that is important to us, we we generally have time for that to come to the council, for us to discuss, go through the legislative process, have policy, and approve it. So um I'm thinking, because of Section two A, one, two, and three, it still is in the spirit of our discussion. But um, again, I think the title might be a little misleading.
You know, based on what you just said, there there was something that I pulled out of there that that it may be worth making a change. And and it's the time-sensitive nature of it, right? When you said with with many of the federal, state, and and sometimes even local one uh items, i- i- if it's on its its regular path, we we've got time. But but I think, you know, the the crux of this, the core of this is the time sensitivity, right? I mean, the perfect example was our neighbors in Arcadia was looking at an alternative transportation plan, grant funding that would directly benefit us, not only from from our relationship with them, but there could have been, you know, we we could be supporting bike lanes on, uh, you know, uh, on um Orange Grove, right, that would ben- directly benefit our our residents, and we missed it because we had to move a meeting. So to me, like, the the part of the core of this is that time-sensitive nature of it, that that maybe that's, that's something that should be added here. I'd I'd love to, others thoughts on it.
Agreed, and the reason we decided to have the mayor as a designate, because we didn't wanna wholly, because it's not always gonna be Jose, we wish it would be, right? Um, but we didn't wanna wholly leave that that decision up to the city manager. Uh, we wanted to have at least one member of this council um weigh in on whether or not they believe the council would kind of agree with it, right? And I think that was a spirit of, I know that's a little off-topic from your comment, but I think that was a spirit of
Great.
why we wanted the mayor, we want at least one person design- designate. If we have three people, that's a Brown Act issue, right? We need to call a meeting. So that's that's why we decided on the mayor.
Can I comment on this, too? Because that was my original worry, is that we're not always gonna be here. Jose's not always gonna be here, and we've seen in the past, we've had issues with city managers and city council members that have gone in cahoots and things weren't done on the up and up, and it held us liable, as well as it was just not moral and ethical. And so the problem I do have is that what if it's not us? What if it's not you and you, and we've implemented this?
Well, so is there, is there a report back on this? Does it come back? It it wa- if if there was something on it, the the resolution, I don't believe, and correct me, you guys all read these real closely, I don't know that there that it has to be reported back at the next meeting.
It it it, there is. It says all policy positions adopted by the city manager designate shall be communicated to the council at the next regularly scheduled
There we go.
city council.
That's right.
Earlier in writing.
Great. I mean, that to me.
But so what if we added two members, which which like we do for an ad hoc committee? What if, what if it's two members of council instead of just the mayor and someone else, or what if it's the mayor and another council member? So my worry is, there's times when a mayor and and a city council member are in cahoots and something bad happens.
So so then how do you choose the second one? Cause cause if if it's
Could it be any two?
I- i- if it's in cahoots on it, you could still have the cahoots. I I would, I would rather go mayor, mayor pro tem, because you've got that 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 relationship already built into the way we do things.
Could it just be like, like we normally do designate the mayor and another council member, or two council members, which would normally default to the mayor, but let's say you're not available either?
Council member low, if if you did it that way, without any kind of undefined term, it would become a standing committee, and that would also be subject to the Brown Act.
Got it.
Right, right.
So it'd have to be designated mayor, mayor pro tem or something? Or does that matter? Either way, it becomes a committee.
Yeah, if you're, if if we're having the mayor and the mayor pro tem working together to review all resolutions, it, we're not calling the committee, but it smells like a committee.
I just don't like it for that. I trust us one hundred percent. But it really worries me, because I've been here for fifty years now, even though I'm all aware since all the whole time, but I've seen things that you're like, huh.
Are you talking about entire councils in cahoots, or just?
No, no, and we, we are.
This could be, so this ordinance can be repealed or rescinded by the council that sees somebody, sees um a city manager and a mayor that are not on the up and up.
But you'd have to actually see a violation at that point.
Well, because it'd be reported in the very next meeting.
My, see, I say, I'm just hypersensitive to to transparency, because I've seen it happen here. What if then they present the report that's worded like they want it to be said? In other words, we don't, we don't know exactly what happens, except that we trust our reports are va- are valid and that they're trustworthy and that this is the honest truth. So if we violate that, if they violate, someone else violates that, they're gonna report what they want.
He said that about anything.
Here's what I'm struggling with. Government today is so, all 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 these agencies, public authorities, are also intertwined with one another. Uh, this, the the League of Cities is very instructive. League of Cities actually has influence. Uh, and it's dependent upon the city members of the League of Cities actually working together to uh speak as one voice in Sacramento. And that has benefits for the members who participate. And there are other organizations like COG, where where same thing's going on. And maybe we get a call from COG and we got it, and it, we don't have time to have a meeting, but we need to act. So there's a practical side to this, and maybe ha- I don't know if it's existed back in the golden years, but I suspect it didn't. I I suspect the gu- intergovernmental relationships are are more important than than ever before. And that's why I was open to discussing this, because I have the same concerns about transparency that you do, Chris. As a student of government, I I I certainly don't need to be reminded of how how easy it is for corruption to weasel its way into a system. So I'm really torn on this. I mean, I I I'm I'm really torn right down the middle on this one.
And I'm with you both with with the transparency and all those issues, but the catalyst is a request from a neighboring agency. And so I I'm trying to, where's the corruption there generally? Um, cause it's, that's the catalyst, right?
Right.
Or a member of an organization which the city is a member, I guess.
Yeah, I mean.
League of Cities, COG, SCAG, you know.
City of Arcadia, City of Monrovia, South Ass.
So anything else would have to be an emergency meeting? If anything else, that we, if anything outside the perimeters of a position that requests of a neighboring public agency or a member organization of which city is a member. So if that was like.
A a special meeting, not an emergency.
Sorry, thank you, sorry, special meeting. Thanks.
Cause I know we've had, we have had opportunities that we missed because of this. You know, if you saw, if you, if we, if if our city manager and our mayor, mayor think that it's a good idea, that it might have a benefit if a law passes or something policy changes higher than us. And it does, and we've we've played a role in that, then it's not just that the law passes. We've also helped the the people that we're working with, so you know, that they're they're gonna be more inclined to help us in the future as well.
And we're, and we're talking about support or non non-support issues, right?
Not policy change.
Is that your, how you're reading it?
Yeah, yeah.
Not changing policies for our city.
No, 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 we're talking about resources that we might be able to use, like for bears, for instance.
I suppose.
That might be beneficial to other agencies as well. Or maybe they, we all vote for bears and maybe they they are, they're happy to, or we help them on something in the future that we know would be beneficial to them, or at least advocate for them, in terms of resources.
I do like the addition of supports an increase in or opposes a decrease in resources.
Yeah, A, one, two, and three, I think, limit this severely um to avoid.
Yeah.
I mean, we had, uh, cause we had the discussion, these were added because of the discussion, avoid those corruption type issues, right?
And I really appreciate your title change, cause I think that's what, I think I was still triggering on, it was like.
We can change it, yeah, and I don't know what we change it to. It is triggering.
I was like, whoa.
So so when this, with uh this gets passed, it's a resolution, then then how does it, how does it enter into like the overall administrative record? So like, like, how does, how do, do this, do future council know what this is? Like in ordinance, you go, you go to the ordinance and you can look up the ordinance, right? How do you know that this, other than um the 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 knowledge of staff or council members at some point in the future, how do people know that this resolution's still around?
I'll defer to the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, resolutions are typically policy-driven, and so the uh city council, a- and they, and they become effective immediately upon the council's approval. Uh, but they can also be amended, or they can be um canceled with council approval as well. Uh, they they are not usually part of the um municipal code unless they're used to amend an existing municipal code. But um they are, there is a log of them kept, and then, and the resolutions are also kept in the book. The council and city staff, through institutional knowledge, would have to know that the policies exist and incorporate them through regular use.
So if it's not used, there 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 may right now be a resolution out there that gives us guidance or gives us a policy direction on something that we're not following, cause we don't know about. Cause it just, it just in in n- natural turnover of 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 staff and council and everyone, it it may just be collecting dust.
It's possible.
Yeah, okay.
City clerk, I you are, I I know you, I know you as tr- city clerk are the keeper of the book of resolutions. Is there also some kind of index of resolutions that can be referenced?
We do have a log of the resolutions that are kept, but it's it's a log that goes, that spans over a number of years. And so uh the the council, if i- if it's inquiring about or or interested in creating a policy or amending a policy, we could look into the index to see if it already exists, or if it's something that could just be amended. But to your point, there could be potentially some resolutions that are that are not being utilized.
Got it. I I wanna circle back. I've 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 taken us on on a little bit of a detour. But to to Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Garcia, are are there edits you'd like to make to the 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 title of the resolution that would make it less, I think triggering was the word?
Well, first, I guess it's establishing a legislative advocacy policy and authorizing the city manager manager to take policy positions on local, regional, state, federal legislation. So it's the whole legislation, regulation initiatives or opportunities, but it doesn't say anything about what the three, bless you, um, take position on requests of neighboring, I guess it'd be too wordy.
And it goes to like letter C, right? The city manager takes a poly- top policy position, and it's about correspondence stating we support, supportive amended, oppose or pose unless amended. I mean, that's really what we're allowing. Um, correspondence or a letter of support or non-support.
And not changing our policies, not changing our legislation, or or state legislation, or.
So it's a spirit of that, I think, should be.
So I I I'm wondering if if we we change it to say um something about responding to requests. If we could work responding to requests or timely, I like that, timely responding to requests in there. Cause cause we're not really, it's it, we are, we are having legislative advocacy, but it, what we're missing is, is that it it's at the request of another body.
And and I think, I I think maybe we need to add a sentence saying, if if this request is needed before the next city council meeting, or one of one of those issues, right? So that has to be, I think, another
Yeah.
catalyst for this to actually be used.
So so are are you saying that under A, you would have, it would be four criteria instead of three?
Yes.
Okay.
Because otherwise it could be used for a lot easier.
Yeah.
To be used, right?
So so um, City Attorney, do you have enough guidance here to come back with another draft on this? I mean, I I don't think, okay, good, cause I don't think it makes sense for us to to
Wordsmith.
Wordsmith it here at the uh uh um. So when it comes back, do we need to have it as discussion? Or so we can, so it can come back as as a consent item?
Uh, Mayor, it can come, it can come back as a consent item, and the direction I have is to change the title to correspond with uh the uh the intent of the council, and also to add a fourth element. uh, the intent of the council, and also to add a fourth element to paragraph A to be, uh, that if the request comes before the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
It, it, but it's, I, even, I don't know, because we're even talking about, um, sometimes we can't call a, um, a special meeting, right? And do we even want to call a special meeting for something as, as, right? I don't even know if we include the special meeting portion, or just say if it comes bef, if the decision needs to be, or the letter needs to be sent prior to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
And, and I would just point out that al- almost, it's almost always the case that the city council can, can call a special meeting and address one of these concerns. But the issue is the time gap between your regular meetings.
Is that a, is that a 36-hour noticing?
Uh, the regular meetings is, is 72 hours, special meetings 24 hours.
24 hours, okay.
So if we were to, to, if we were to give you guidance, and it comes back on consent, do we need to, to vote on it tonight to give, that we agree with direction? Okay, so it's, it's okay to come back on consent, and, and the council's comfortable with the, the edits that are there? I mean, we'll have a chance to vote on it then, and it, but it will be on consent. We discussed it twice.
And it gives the public another chance to get public comment on it. I, I like that idea, yeah.
Kelly Crebs will be able to-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because she had some poignant points last time, too.
All right. Thank you. All right, so then that takes us to, uh, future agenda items. So, um, do we have any future agenda items?
So in discussion with Code 12.20.070, duty of abuting landowners to cultivate trees on public property, the reason I'm asking about investigating this is this came up also when we talked with the fire safe council, about who's responsible for trimming the trees and the brush that's in the way. And what if you don't have a sidewalk, and what if the tree is on city property? And we know if it's easy on a city property, it's their responsibility, if it's, it's part of the fire codes or making it safer. Um, and if it's on private property, it's theirs. So what do we do about these areas that are, we're not sure? Like, do, do, literally are they all going to have to call the city and everyone, and you're going to have to go out there and check the exact area, check the parcel maps, and decide on that? And does, and does our fire department have that parcel map? So when they go to request people do brush abatement, they're advising someone to trim their trees, and it could be our property.
All right.
I don't have any-
City, city manager, is that enough? Good?
I want to clarify.
Okay.
Great. So while he's waiting to clarify, so I hear there's nothing from, from either of you gentlemen. Okay, great.
So we're going to look at trimming of trees in parkways, areas that are- So staff will, will come back with trimming of trees in parkways and areas, uh, that are, we have blurred, blurred lines, and who the responsibility is to trim the trees.
Mm-hmm, especially as the conversation came up tonight.
Could, could we-
There's not an obvious, obvious sidewalk in parkway.
And then if, in the code, if it says that the resident is responsible for the pu, public property line, does that mean that if, if that tree is in front of my house, and it's actually, you know, a tree that could endanger my home? Like, the branches are laying on my house? Does that mean that I'm responsible now for also the fire safety and trimming that tree, even though it's on public land?
I, I'd like to, to expand it just slightly. Instead of trimming, I'd like to say management.
Okay, thank you. Much better.
Because, you know, I've got palm trees in front of mine, and, you know, if, I, I could be out there with a chainsaw the next day if, if that was, if I were allowed to do that. Not that I would, but I could, and so, you know, I think that's to be part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Great. Then, um, at this point, look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned till February 25th.
Can someone help me with Genesis real quick?